Good evening, everybody. Due to COVID, we're kind of spreading out here a little bit as much as we can. But we have three presentations tonight. Our first presentation actually is going to be given to a community member of ours. Okay, so we're gonna play a game. It's called rotation. If you're here for the general meeting and you're not here for presentations, we have family members that are here for a presentation and can't come in here because of capacity. So if you are here for the general meeting and would be kind enough to go into the lobby for 15 minutes, you'll be then let back in once the presentations are over. But the presentation up front is for a family member and family members can't make it in. We really do appreciate that. Just needed two? Okay, never mind. The rest we don't have to leave. We got enough. We got all the family in here now? All right, take two. With that said, we have three presentations tonight. Two of them are going to be given by our staff members. But the first one tonight is a longtime community member who... You don't think of certain heroes all the time. But when you hear a little bit about this story, you'll think of what kind of hero this man is. Carlos, would you join me up here? So Daniel Porres is our Public Works Director and our makeshift interpreter tonight. So he's gonna interpret for us. But Carlos was brought to my attention by our newest council member, Roger Nunez, that he was retiring. And I said, Carlos, where's he retiring from? And they said Rocky's Pizza. And I went, oh, yeah, I know you. And I said, I know him. He's delivered to my house again many times. When someone spends 20 years... It was 20 years?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven years delivering in Desert Hot Springs and being part of the community, you get to know a lot of people, right? He says many friends in Desert Hot Springs. And that's what's great to hear. You know, too many times people see the good and the bad. But you talk about the good, and that's what's wonderful. So we'd like to give you a certificate of recognition from the city council saying thank you. The mayor and the city council of the city of Desert Hot Springs hereby honors... I'm trying to remember what it is. In grateful recognition of your commitment to serving others in your community, thank you for putting smiles on faces of our residents. Carlos, congratulations. For him, it's a very big recognition.
Me pone muy emocionado porque realmente no me lo esperaba. Y saber que tanta gente he podido llegar a sus hogares. Me han recibido con mucho amor. Mucho precio. Nunca tuve... Ningún problema con nadie.
Says that with...
Y eso.
With all the time he's been here, he's always received with open arms and has helped him all the way through. He wasn't expecting this, so he has all the gratitude for you guys who give this to him. He worked at Rocky's for 27 years? The owners of the Rocky's Pizza treat him as family, and he treats them as family. Says he still has the key to the pizza. The game of key to the pizzeria. So he's very grateful for the recognition and appreciates it. Our next presentation is going to be given by our Human Resources Director, Pam Muse. This is a COVID recognition program for our city staff. She's going to explain what's going on, and our city staff that are being recognized will stand in the audience tonight.
Okay, so each year, the city of Desert Hot Springs recognizes employees that have served the city for five, 10, 15, and 20 years. And employees are given a certificate and a PIN. Now with COVID, at the beginning of the year, we did not have live meetings, so we went ahead and gave the certificates and the PINs to the employees. But now that we're back to live meetings, we wanted to still bring them in and recognize them. However, some of them could not make it to the meeting, so I also prepared a slideshow. But if you are here, if you could stand up or wave your hand just so that we can see that you are here. So for five years, we have Virginia Alvarez, who's a police records specialist; Cory Coranza, police sergeant; Troy Castillo, police officer; Gregory Elias, police officer; Marcus Futch, police officer; Scott Hazen, police sergeant; Jessica Love, management analyst; Adam Perez, police officer; Danny Porres, public works director; Doria Wilmes, deputy city manager; for 10 years, we have Gerald Soriano, city clerk; and 15 years, we have Jim Henson, police chief; Arnold Herrera, accountant; Teddy Jones, crossing guard; and Otto Mesa, maintenance technician. So we want to thank you for your continued service. Thank you.
And to all the city staff members, you know, from my mayor's office and the city council, we really thank you for your service to our community. I've mentioned this many, many times, that you are truly our heroes during this time, this last year during the pandemic, keeping our city running and moving forward. So thank you to all of you and especially to those who are getting your service awards tonight. Thank you. Our next presentation is the Economic Development Presentation, and this will be given by our Economic Development Manager, Denise Hammond.
Good evening. I'm happy to present tonight an overview of the growing interest in our vibrant city. As I interact with residents, brokers, developers, and businesses, I am hearing an excitement about the possibilities here. Projects are moving forward, businesses are opening, and homes are being built. With our ongoing improvements to parks, roadways, and other infrastructure, we are setting the stage for a strong future. So I will start by including remarks from a few new businesses here and from a broker who has done business here. During the recent year, we saw Royal Emerald open as a pharmaceuticals research company. And we also are now enjoying a newly renovated Azure Palm Hotel. So I asked Mark and Maria about their experience here, and they provided these comments. Mark Crozier, who's president and CEO of Royal Emerald Pharmaceuticals, said, "It's been easy and super positive working with the city to be the first pharmaceutical company to achieve this license. We hope it spurs a lot of interest in DHS with other pharma companies and expands more jobs and growth in the city. We are pro DHS and can't thank the city enough for the opportunity to be part of it." So I also spoke with Maria Lys, who's the proprietor of the Azure Palm Hotel. And she said, "I can only say what a joy it is to build in the city where the city shares your vision of expansion, growth, and success. It is rare to be in an environment where the business owner is supported, encouraged, and assisted in building their business. Desert Hot Springs Council is spot on, on the right path to success." I also reached out to Matthew Bodwin, proprietor of Mikasa Days Bar and Debbie Myers, broker at the Newport Beach-based firm ICRE. Matthew from Mikasa said, "Being able to achieve our dream of owning a resort such as Mikasa Hot Springs in the middle of the spa zone in Desert Hot Springs is exciting to my husband and I. To achieve our goals, city council has been very supportive to our needs and streamlining the process considering the obstacles the pandemic has given us." Debbie Myers said, "As a broker who has successfully done business in DHS, I'm excited about the emerging potential for the city. I continue to review potential projects, and I'm now considering one of my own. A key factor in my ongoing focus on the city is the approachable city team with their positive, can-do attitude. I think we saw that tonight as our meeting opened up. It was great." Next, I will touch on a few different areas we are focusing on, and then I'm going to talk about some next steps. Our team at the city has worked continuously to help our businesses and residents deal with COVID. We appreciate in team with our regional partners to gather information about new funding opportunities and to be aware of the current level of COVID regulations. We push this out weekly or bi-weekly or whatever is required to our businesses. And we also work to connect them with the resources to answer their questions about the local, state, and regional funding opportunities, such as the new restaurant funding program. Anybody know how to change it? There we go. We appreciate the PPE, Personal Protective Equipment, by CVEP, and we have distributed the gear to many of our businesses. We provide regular updates on a tier level. And to help our businesses succeed through COVID, to help them get advice on funding support, we routinely connect them with our SBDC partners. They are a great help to us. And now we are focusing on helping employers who are reopening to find workers. So let's switch subjects and talk about housing a little bit. The housing market here is strong and growing. We maintain ongoing contact with our builders to help build connections and to highlight their developments. We have found that by maintaining a housing development report and updating it with prices, sizes, sales, phasing, we have current marketing information that's a good tool for us to show prospects the expanding number of new homes here. We also highlight new developments on our social media, and we announce it at our monthly professional meetings. If we're looking at the slides, the Skyborne Development continues to grow. The Gallery Homes Development is sold out. Now, Lennar Fortune 500 Company is starting construction on 79 homes with an option to purchase 108 more lots. Rolling Hills and Sunset Springs are sold out, and Aqua Dulce is moving forward with 73 homes, selling out phases one and two already. Silver Rock Development is preparing entitlement work on 41 lots and will have other infill housing under construction. We have residential developers continuing to look for new housing opportunities, and we have a growing interest in moving stalled projects forward. In addition to growing our supply of market rate housing, we're working to grow our supply of affordable housing. As we all know, the lack of adequate and affordable housing is probably one of the most critical issues our country is facing. Our economic development efforts include both a focus on housing stability and on growing economic opportunity. Each of these areas complements the other. First, I will address our rental housing support programs. We recognize that Coachella Valley needs to work together to address this crisis, and we're excited to sign on to the Regional Pledge for Housing and Opportunity to implement the Collaborative Action Network's priorities. Because of COVID and related job losses, the need to assist renters with their payments has greatly grown. We're excited to partner with Lift to Rise to implement the Rental Assistance Program for residents impacted by COVID who need outpaying their rent. We promote their efforts on our social media, and we'll co-host a rental assistance pop-up program this Saturday, May 8, in the Outside Plaza of City Hall. The event will offer in-person assistance to provide information about the program and to get people signed up. We know many folks do not have computer skills or awareness to learn about the program, and so we think it is critical to guide them through it and get them signed up so that their landlords are paid and the renter does not end up homeless. And we encourage everyone to look on our Facebook and look for the information on what you need to bring to this event to get your rental assistance. An emerging element of renter support is employment connections. We partner with the workforce provider organizations, such as the Riverside County Workforce Development Center, to connect workers with employers. We put the word out about regional virtual job fairs, and we also connect our workforce coordinator directly with employers seeking to hire. We also are reaching out to College of the Desert to assist with connecting their students to employers for jobs. We're reviewing ways to develop an intern program for our hospitality industry and maybe other industries to help grow a skilled workforce now and to also go up for the future. And an essential component of renter support is building the inventory of affordable housing. This involves working in several areas, starting with reaching out to developers of affordable housing, such as the Coachella Valley Housing Coalition, Chelsea Development Corporation, National Cornmore. We partner to help identify sites and to help grow funding sources. We maintain a list of sites designated through our housing element as being for affordable housing, and we'll update these when we do our housing element update. Additional partner outreach is also important. We maintain contact with Riverside County Department of Housing, Homelessness Prevention, and Workforce Solutions to identify funding programs for affordable housing development. We also connect with them to seek any land acquisition opportunities for affordable housing. We reach out to state and federal partners and private lending partners for other funding sources. And the city is fortunate to qualify for many USDA programs. And we'll also tap into the permanent local housing allocation once the funds are received from the state. We also qualify for federal home loan bank funding, and we're reaching out to our banking partners to look at community funding options. Now that the city's Housing Authority Fund is starting to grow a bit, we are planning how we might allocate a portion of the fund to support new housing construction. Growing our rental supply of housing is critical. But we also know that a core element of creating economic stability is moving renters to owners. Assisting buyers with down payment funding helps them make the leap to homeownership. We connect with several partners to obtain information about the homebuyer support programs. A key funding program that is available here in our city, and not in all the cities, is the USDA 502 Direct Loan. This program assists low and very low-income applicants obtain safe, decent, and sanitary housing through low-interest loans, not requiring a down payment. We also reach out to the county for their first-time homebuyer programs. In general, a buyer may only receive what they need, up to 20% of the purchase price of the home. We stay in touch with the Fair Housing Council to publish their list of first-time homebuyer training classes that are required to participate in the program. The maximum down payment cannot exceed $75,000. The county has a maximum sales price for the home to allow it to be included in this program. And to date, most of our housing has qualified based on price. Our new homes have been regarded as being able to be purchased by moderate to above-moderate income buyers. However, with rising prices, this could change. We partner with Coachella Valley Housing Coalition to promote their self-help program. This program typically allows the buyer to save 35% to 60% of the cost of a market rate, single-family home by contributing their own labor to the construction of the house. In addition to cost savings, there are several long-term benefits of the program. The homeowner learns general maintenance. The program brings neighbors together. The family keeps their tools that were provided for the construction. And sometimes, the homeowner goes further with the construction trade to learn the trade. The self-help program has 12 lots under construction, and there are four to six more households being qualified for the program. We'll be partnering to help in finding additional lots for future programs and considering ways to partner with other new housing developers for participation in the program. As a result of more competition for fewer funds, there may be other types of models considered for the future program, such as duplex or triplex models. In addition to promoting homebuyer assistance to purchase a home, we also partner with the USDA and others to assist with home repair. Residents that meet income requirements can qualify for low-interest home repair loan from the USDA up to $40,000. This is in California. It's not in every state at that amount. Or if they are 62 and older, they can get a grant up to $10,000. We will host the USDA in the future to do a pop-up clinic to inform homeowners of these programs when the USDA allows it as COVID recedes. We are also evaluating partnering with other organizations for homeowners' assistance, such as Coachella Valley Housing Coalition, to access their construction expertise and HUD funding to partner with our homeowners to help with aging in place. And we're looking at using volunteer community groups for basic cleanup and repair. Now, we're going to talk about our businesses a little bit, hotels and spas. We are excited to see the ongoing renovations underway on our spas and hotels. We have had growing interest from buyers looking to purchase hotel in Desert Hot Springs, but at this point, we have few available. We hear that our hotels that are for sale are getting multiple offers. If requested, we're happy to accompany potential purchasers to their site to help highlight our community. Now, we are prospecting for development of new hotels, including freeway-serving prototypes. Some of our recent openings, I've put up here on the slide. Mikasa Hot Springs opened in 2020. Azure Palm opened just last month after a full-scale renovation of $10 million. We have had several renovations and expansions underway, including Too Much Palm, Ambassador, Desert Rain, and Emerald Springs. As hotels are reopening, they're reporting very solid occupancy levels. Now, as he mentioned, their challenge is post-pandemic restaffing. The cannabis industry continues to grow. And with that growth, we're seeing additional jobs, additional, including construction jobs. The industry is ever-changing, and now that we have our new pharmaceutical research company, Royal Emerald, here, we are looking at new opportunities for recruitment with other pharmaceutical research companies. We have the advantage in Desert Hot Springs of available land for light industrial warehousing recruitment. With a pending expansion of Mission Springs sewer capacity at our southwest part of the city, that will eventually be a huge benefit to us to grow our product. We're growing our cannabis tourism niche for Desert Hot Springs. Our city manager's office is working with the first existing hotel that will convert to a cannabis hotel to take advantage of the permit. We have growing interest in retail here in all parts of town. We are seeing revitalization along Pearson Boulevard, including the demolition of the vacant structure at Weston Pearson, the opening of the new Spread Sandwich Shop, the pending IBTH dispensary to be located next to the Spread, the pending new construction of the DHS Plaza Convenience Store, the new Moss More Better Skateboard Shop, which just opened very recently, and let us not forget our own City Hall. Palm Drive has a growing level of retail and mixed-use interest. We will see a new Burger King start construction soon. The new county library will open, and other new businesses will open in the next year. We have prospects looking at space in existing centers, and we will also have new construction of the Dollar General store. And the Mission Lake Center recently opened a new store, the Paradise Liquor Store. And as the amount of new housing continues to grow, we anticipate more retail growth there. So what are some of the next steps? Well, as we grow our housing supply and therefore our population, this will reinforce our retail recruitment efforts. We continue to reach out to retail and commercial prospects and to work closely with new prospects to help them cross the finish line. Getting jobs-ready sites is important. We're looking at new funding tools to help create infrastructure, and we're coordinating with Public Works to facilitate new grants. Getting the word out is a constant focus. We will continue our ED roundup. We'll be redoing the ED page of the website. We're coordinating with our marketing team to create materials, such as a flyer of our restaurants. We continue to grow our targeted outreach to market the city and to achieve referrals. Outreach includes calling on our businesses and continued networking with our partners and representing DHS on regional committees, such as the CAN, the DVBA, and now the CVB Team Huddle Group. It also includes connecting with industry organizations, such as the Desert Doctors Organization for Medical Recruitment. We're continuing our medical outreach with direct prospecting of doctors' groups. We're reviewing incentives to promote our recruitment efforts. And having an easily accessible database of available sites is key. We will soon have access to an online database of for-sale and rental properties hosted by AIR CRE. But since many of our sites are not yet listed, we continue to approach owners to evaluate availability of their site pending outside interest. We will continue to work closely with developers, realtors, brokers, and site selectors, and we will submit proposals to respond to relevant RFPs that are distributed by the state or other entities. Data is an important tool for us to assist in recruitment. We continue to build our database to track and market our growth. As we achieve a growing number of new home sales, we are working with developers to understand the buyer profiles. We're working with CVEP and other partners to track new demographic and tourism trends to help with our marketing. Growing our workforce skill set will also assist growth. We're partnering with College of the Desert to evaluate ways to grow internship programs for retail, hospitality, culinary, and possibly political science. And there could be other areas as well. We're promoting job fairs to our community and are connecting employers to job boards and more. We're looking at how we can combine training classes with affordable housing projects. And lastly, growing our housing stock will continue to be a focus, as previously mentioned. So thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you for the very thorough report. We literally have one minute before our open session, so we knew we were backing a lot into tonight's meeting. So if the council has direct questions, we'll get it through the city manager's office to you, Denise. But fantastic job. Thank you for giving us that update. Before we start our regular meeting, though, I wanted to introduce the new director of the Senior Center, Cheryl Hunter. She's back here. She is, like a lot of you were watching, if you were here at the last meeting, we gave a recognition to the director that was leaving, Melanie Lyon. And so in a short period of time, they've hired a new director. And it's fantastic. Her and her husband are part of this community. And we're looking forward to you taking over that position. So congratulations. And she'll be coming back to give a presentation at a later time about the Senior Center. With that said, we have exactly no seconds, and we're going to open up the meeting. This is the City of Desert Hot Springs regular meeting of the city council. The city council serving as the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency board for Tuesday, May 4, 2021. This is our 6:00 PM regular session. You are here at the City Hall in person, and we are on Zoom. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gardner? Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Councilmember Pye?
Present.
Mayor Protim Betts?
Present.
And Mayor Menace?
Present. On our invocation tonight, we're going to have Minnie Whitehead. She's back with us again. Thank you so much, and the microphone is yours.
I thank you for allowing me to be here. I give you honor.
I give you honor. Father God, we come before you at Thanksgiving in praise for who you are. We pray for each and every one of council member in this place, all those others that are involved. We pray, Lord, that you would go before them, strengthen them, Lord, in all that they do that they set their hands to do, for we know that their hands are blessed. Lord, watch over and keep them. Put your hands of protection around them. We pray right now in the name of Jesus that they would be wise, Father God, in all that they do. You said, Father God, that a wise person is strong, strong and obedient to the will that you have given them, Father, to lead, to guide. And Father, we pray in Jesus' name that each and every one, Father, would hear your voice, listen, obey. And Father, we pray that as this place grows and becomes a place of, to live, a place for families, a place, Father God, for businesses, innovations, Father, that you lead them. So Father, we pray that you would dispatch your angels to go before them, prepare the way in which they go, that nothing by no means were hurt or harm them, and that you would open up the doors of understanding, give them wisdom, give them innovations. And Lord, we thank you for that, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Our pledge of allegiance tonight, I think I've worked that way, I'll keep working this way. Mr. Nunez, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our next item is the city's attorney's report on closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have no reportable action.
Before we get to the approval of the agenda, due to the fact that we approved the consent calendar when we do the agenda, I do have two requests to speak on item 11. I'm going to allow those speakers to speak now, and then the city council can make a decision on whether they want to approve the consent calendar in whole. I have a, are they both on Zoom?
Yes, they are.
All right, Terry Ross is first on item 11, which is, let me announce that item Terry's requested to speak on item 11, which is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance adding chapter 17.23, Too Much Palm specific plan to chapter, I'm sorry, to title 17 zoning of the Desert Hot Springs municipal code. Terry, are you there? Terry, I see you on the screen. You'll have to unmute yourself if you'd like to speak to this item.
Okay, here we go.
There you go.
I'm basically here to observe the meeting and comment if need be, but I don't have anything else further to say.
Thank you very much. George, is it Gos-Gosin? Ghostin?
Mayor, I'm here with the team just to answer any question that you may have.
Thank you very much. At this time, the city council may amend the order of the agenda and approve the consent calendar whole or remove items of consent calendar for separate discussion. How was, what's the pleasure of the council?
I'd move that we collect that as whole.
So approve the agenda as is and the consent calendar whole. I have a motion, let me get a second, then I'll open up a discussion. I have a second by Mr., I have a motion by Mr. Nunez, and a second by Mr. Gardner, and I have discussion, Mr. Betts.
Just to note that my vote on item 11, opposition remains, I'm not changing my vote on that item.
Anyone else have discussion? All right, there is a motion and a second. Cheryl, I lost my screen. Oh, there it is.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All right, so items on consent calendar were passed, items 11 and nine, I'm sorry, 10 and 11 were passed. With that, we'll move on to public comment. At this time pursuant to the Brown Act, any person may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council not listed on the agenda under the Brown Act. The city council shall take action on, shall not take action on, or discuss matters raised during public comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council and shall be devoid of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during public comment. I have four on my list. We'll start with Zoom. Is there anyone on Zoom for the general comments?
Yes, I have Francisco Padilla.
Francisco, come up there. Francisco, you're on the screen, and you have three minutes.
Hey, good afternoon, good evening, everyone. I just, I just wanted to observe and basically thank Mr. Roger Nunez for being so, so quick to reply to any concerns that I have in regards to the community. Thank you so much, appreciate it. That's basically it, I appreciate it.
Thank you for attending tonight. Our next speaker?
The next speaker is Clifford Sullivan. I am not sure what he wants to speak on. His registration didn't specify, so I want to make sure he is not speaking on an item.
Clifford, are you speaking in general? You'll need to unmute yourself. Are you speaking in general comments?
No, I'm just listening in.
Okay, thank you very much. Next speaker?
That is everyone, Mayor.
I had two on the list, but they're not here.
They are not.
Okay, if they show up, let me know. And then in person, is there anybody who would like to speak in public comments, Cheryl?
Yes, we have two, Mr. Mayor. First person is Barbara Eastman.
Barbara's no, she's a pro to this, so she knows how to.
Barbara Eastman, resident Desert Hot Springs, mayor, council, and staff. I am here tonight representing the Desert Hot Springs Women's Club, which celebrated 68 years here in Desert Hot Springs. We are the oldest non-national organization. Our mission is to continue enriching Desert Hot Springs through scholarship, friendship, community service, social welfare, and enhancing the image of Desert Hot Springs Women's Club. We are honored to announce that we were able to give this, out this year, the following scholarships. Our Desert High, Desert Hot Springs High School students are Abraham Doran Diaz, Omar Bahina, Karen Orozco, Thomas Seha, Abigail Vera, Austin Aguirre, and Arlith Gutierrez-Perez, total of $11,500 in scholarships. Thank you to the generous donations of residents, Women's Club members, and the City of Desert Hot Springs, Robert Griffin, former DHS Council member, and Aniella Zavala, former DHS Council member, and the hard work of our Women's Club members make this possible, especially not being able to do our fundraising events of the past years due to the pandemic. Our theme for next year is shoot for the stars. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara, and thank you to Women's Club for all you do for our community. Next speaker?
Next and last speaker is Donna Wardine.
Donna, you're a pro at this, too. You know what to do.
Been a pro, not a pro. My name is Donna, Mayor. Council members, associates, and Desert Hot Springs residents. My name is Donna Wardine, and I have been a resident and homeowner in Desert Hot Springs for 22 years now. During that time, I've watched and been a part of the city's growth. I have supported our youth, our veterans, and served it as a commissioner. I, first, I want to thank publicly our former city manager, Charles Maynard, for his vision, his hard work in coordinating and making the entrance areas and appearance of Desert Hot Springs absolutely stellar. I'm proud to come home and proud to have people visit. Second, I eagerly await the opening of our new county library. Thank you to all who helped make this happen for us, and I look forward to it opening and also to the dedication. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Donna. Do I have any other speakers in the audience who would like to speak in general comments? This is not on items on the agenda, this should be a general comment. Last call, final call, public comments are closed. We're going to move to city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor. Two quick updates, one from our finance director, Jeffrey Bachheim.
Thank you, and good meeting, good evening, Mayor and council members. Our financial update, and we have Gerald pull up the slide. This is the financial status of the city as of May 3rd, 2021. For the current, for the fiscal year 2021, the general fund and public safety fund has a combined revenue of $16,122,801, which is 64% of the amended budget. At this time last year during fiscal year 1920, we were at over $14.9 million in revenue, which is at 66% of the amended budget. Fiscal year 2021 expenditures are at over $18.9 million, which is at 70% of the amended budget. Last year at this time, the fiscal year expenditures were eight, over $18.3 million, which is at 76% of the budget. We have completed 83% of the fiscal year as of the end of April, and most of our revenues are keeping on track and doing the same percentage or higher than they were at the same time last year, and expenditures are remaining, you know, within, within limits. Our city significant, next, significant revenue sources such as the property tax or public safety parcel tax, triple flip VLF, will be received later this month, and another significant one, the cannabis cultivation taxes will be received in July. And that is my, those are the financial highlights.
Thanks, Jeffrey. Our next update is from our Public Works Director and translator extraordinaire, Danny Porras.
So a couple of updates, there's street work around the city. There's three major areas of street work with the NPL Company, which is a gas company's contractor. They're working on Avenida Dorado, on Mission Lakes Boulevard, and Altaloma. The company is doing gas line upgrades and street repairs, and the, and the work will continue throughout a period of time. There's also work on Indian Canyon at Dillon Intersection. It is a sewer project that continues to work on the west side of the road. And just to give an update on the changeable message signs, we completed two field, field meetings for the two locations. They, we have our soils engineer complete soil samples at the two locations to design the changeable message sign structural portion of them, and the reimbursement agreement from SEBAG, and the city will be presented at the next council meeting on May 18th. Thank you.
Thanks, Danny. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to mayor and council member comments, and we'll start at this end tonight, Jan.
It's simple, Sunday is Mother's Day. Happy Mother's Day.
Mr. Nunez?
I have none, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gardner, you've got a big shoes to fill by making it short.
Sorry, I have several screens of slides here, no. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just have a couple of quick things here. Had an opportunity to do some hiking trail scouting last week with the executive director of the Coachella Valley Mountains Conservancy, and some folks from the Friends of the Desert Mountains, and we scouted a couple of possible trail locations up at the top of Santa Cruz, and depending some funding from the state, I hope we'll have an announcement of some, a couple of fantastic new trails later this summer here in Desert Hot Springs, so that'll be really cool. Toward the new library, along with my colleagues, put it mildly, quite spectacular. It'll be a wonderful addition to the city. No firm date for a grand opening yet, but sometime this summer. Filled in for the mayor, chairing the Erika Board Meeting last week, Eastern Riverside Interoperable Communications Authority, winding down Erika over the next few years, moving to a more integrated system of police and fire radios dispatch, once those long-term bonds are paid off. I don't know how you do that meeting every so often. It was several pots of coffee. Also wanted to remind folks that if you have yet to visit Desert X Exhibitions, you have another week and a half. They end on May 16th. Our wonderful one in DHS off Pearson and Miracle Hill is the second most popular one, according to their tracking data, which is really neat, because every time I've driven up there, there's been a dozen or so cars, people up there viewing that, and most of them have never been out to Desert Hot Springs, so it's really nice to have that there and have them, have them visiting. Getting to see how great our city is up close for the first time. It's paying off in our hotel traffic, too. As Ms. Hammett pointed out, our hotels are doing fantastic. They all have a significant increase in visitors, and a few are even sold out on the weekends. Two more real quick notes, wanted to give a shout out to our animal care and control staff, who've been doing some great work, taking care of our fur babies here in town. Always heartwarming to read of the adoptions and fosters of the strays. It's just, I read that report every week, and I just have to smile. And it's a good reminder, too, of how well they, the staff is at reuniting owners with their pets who have wandered off. So remember, the easiest way to get your pet back is, if you lose it, is to have it licensed and chipped, and all of which our ACC staff can do. Finally, Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. Many of you know I'm a big motorcycle rider, and as a motorcycle rider, I very much appreciate people paying attention to those of us out there on the road. Our DHS PD is going to be conducting enhanced motorcycle safety enforcement throughout the city this month, so as you drive, please check twice for motorcycles, and remember that riders have the same rights on the road as other vehicles, including the full width of the lane. Riders always remember to wear a helmet, drive defensively, and never assume that a driver can see you, so all be safe out there. That's all I've got. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Betts. We've got a busy meeting today, so I'll keep it short, but I think all of us at council here get comments from the residents. I sure appreciate them. We had one that came through last couple of days, and it's a way to notify motorists that Gene Autry and Indian are closed before they get all the way down there and have to turn around and find another route. I don't know where that would be, but Hope Staff got that same email, and that maybe they're looking into what we can do along those lines. Be attending the Southern California Association of Governments annual meeting on May 6th. There's just bylaw changes that are coming up, and I don't think they have any big import to the city, but if any council members, I'm the voting delegates, if any council members want to weigh in on those, let me know how you want me to vote on those. That's available online. Took the library tour with Councilmember Gardner and Councilmember Nunez, and absolutely fabulous facility. Tentative, don't mark this in your calendars yet, but I understand June 26th is the tentative ribbon cutting date that we're looking for, so it's a Saturday, so that'll be nice. They're moving in, what I heard, a million dollars with the new books and equipment. That's the process they're in now, and that's going to be taking over the next two months to stock it. And if it looks as nice with books and everything else filled up as it does just now, just absolutely wonderful. Just want a quick shout out to, congratulations to It's Taste of India. It's a restaurant here in town, not offering Mexican food, nothing wrong with Mexican food, but every time somebody announces a new restaurant, they're happy that it's something other than Mexican food, because we have so many in town. But they've, they had a really tough go of it. They opened two months before the COVID shutdowns hit, and if anybody knows anything about opening a business, that's a pretty critical time to be told all of a sudden, now you've got to shut down. Well, they had a grand reopening. They've been open throughout as best they could, but they had a grand reopening, and I went and stopped in, and they've been busy, so support all our local businesses, but there's one where you can go and make a big difference, because they had a really tough go of it. And then congratulations to Cheryl Hunter. Certainly wonderful news to see that that was taken care of so quick. When I got the email across my desk, I said, okay, our city staff's doing their job, and they made a great choice. So I haven't known Cheryl for quite a while, and interacted with her throughout the community over the years, and I can't think of a better person to be filling that, that job, so thank you very much for that. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you, and I'll try to be brief tonight also. Talked a little bit about the message signs, which is great. You know, Danny Porras, our Public Works Manager, is working on the two signs that were approved, and if you hadn't been paying attention because of COVID and been here, one of the other plans was that he had wanted multiple other signs within the community, so hopefully as time progresses, we'll have those signs to help direct you when the traffic is, is bad in certain areas. So I'm looking forward to that. Attended the Riverside County Transportation Budget Implementation Meeting. It's a committee that I sit on, not much pertaining to Desert Hot Springs, so it won't pour you. If you had a watch, if you had a chance to watch KESQ last week, they did a mayor's get together again from a year, so they did a full Zoom mayor, all the mayors of the Coachella Valley a year ago when, when the pandemic started, and then again last week, you can see that online. We sat on there for about almost an hour, giving answers and questions, and had our 15 seconds of fame on KESQ. With that said, I'm not going to get deep into a lot of my meetings this week. I just wanted to also say Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there that's coming up this week. Don't forget your mother, and Happy Cinca de Mayo. Roger and I work, so we can't go out and celebrate tomorrow night. The others, our three are retired, so we're going to make sure that they don't put any, set off any fireworks. On a serious note, though...
On a serious note, though, fireworks really disturbs the community, dogs and pets, so please be courteous neighbors. And that's all I got. So we're going to move into public hearing. Item number three is appeal from the Planning Commission. Planning Commission approved the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration, development permit number zero five dash seventeen, conditional use permit number zero nine dash eighteen, tentative track map number three seven five nine seven, an application for the development of four hundred and two residential condominiums and a clubhouse on a twenty-five acre parcel on the north side of Fifteenth Avenue, west of Palm Drive, and the RH, which is residential high, and MU dash C, which is mixed-use corridor zoning district. And again, this is appeal from the Planning Commission's decision, and our community development director, Brian Swanson.
Mr. Mayor, before we get into the staff presentation, I'd get just a couple of points of inquiry if I could. One is, there was a public notice for today's, the public notice for today's hearing indicates that written public comment would not be allowed after April twentieth, and I'm thinking that might have, you know, discouraged some people from commenting that otherwise would have. But I understand we have a determination from our city attorney that that's not going to be any type of problem for the city to go ahead, even though the public notice indicated that, it was supposed to have indicated you could put public comment in up until May four, and it said in the official posting, April twentieth. So if we could just get the city attorney's take for the record on.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's my understanding that when the noticing went out, all the dates in fact were proper. As, as a matter of fact, there's been noticing of this public hearing, and this item actually went before Planning Commission nearly six months ago. What was the error, and please staff can correct me if I'm incorrect, but the error was merely just on the agenda, and the agenda, the, the agenda that has gone out. So all the noticing actually that went out was, was in fact proper. The agenda itself had a typographical error that said May twentieth rather than May fourth. I don't believe that anybody in, in the, the audience or any of the project opponents, or, or the project applicant for that matter, was prejudiced in any way. I know that there are several people actually lined up to actually speak on the item. So that is my take on it, is that the noticing was proper. The only item that is what I call is a typographical error, or I don't know if it's improper, but it's a typo, is on the agenda itself, but the notice was correct.
Okay, does this satisfy your question?
Yeah, and then I just wanted to make sure that was clear for everybody, because questions raised about it. And then the other one was, apparently we've been just handed a document from Hernandez Environmental Services dated May fourth, twenty twenty-one, just handed the council at the dais, and this isn't yet a matter of the public record, is that correct? I don't know what this is.
Joe?
I'll defer to Patricia.
This is a letter provided by the applicants, or I should say developers, biologists for the record.
Yes, and if I can add, because it's in my hands, City Clerk, it's in the record.
Okay, so, but it's just been now given to the council at this very moment, and just so in case anybody's wondering if this document turns up later, it's not anything that we've seen before. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome, we'll now move into the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. The following project is for the development of forty-two residential buildings, which include twenty-five two-story buildings with eight units each, and seventeen three-story buildings with twelve units each, for a total of four hundred and two condominiums, and will also include a clubhouse on a twenty-five acre parcel. The current general plan and zoning designation for the site is residential high-density and mixed-use corridor, and the proposed use of the property is consistent with both the general plan and zoning ordinance. Shown here is a table outlining, outlining the current zoning and general plan land use designations and existing land use for the surrounding properties. Also shown here is a table with the development standards of the RH and MUC zone. Staff has reviewed the proposed setbacks, height, building separation, density, et cetera, and the proposed project meets all the code standards. Shown here are the two-story elevations, which are proposed at almost twenty-six feet in height, well below the maximum allowed height, ranging from fifty-five to sixty feet, that have a desert contemporary modern style with finished materials of stucco accent wall tile, brick, and tubular steel railings. The building elevations so, show reoccurring design elements on each building, and will have a similar cutter schemes, and will vary throughout the project site. The three-story elevations have a proposed height of a little over thirty-five feet, which within the zone, the max height allows for up to fifty-five to sixty feet. The building's design utilizes variations in the use of materials on the facades, main elements, to add architectural interest to the building elevations. The building elevation incorporates a parapet pop-up architectural element to help break up flat, long walls, and incorporates pop-up parapets and tower-like structures, which incorporate into the main pilaster elements. The project proposes one-floor plan for the four hundred and two condominiums with three high-end finishes to choose from, which will consist of dual master streets, suites with two full baths and approximately one thousand two hundred and forty-five square feet with a private patio or a wraparound balcony. The project includes a two-story, ten thousand five hundred and ninety-seven square foot clubhouse with similar architectural finishes of the residential buildings, and a max height of a little under thirty feet, which is well below the maximum height of fifty-five feet. The clubhouse will offer many, many amenities that will include a gym, spa room, multi-use rooms, a dog wash room, outdoor sitting area, just to name a few. In addition, there will be a community pool and a sand volleyball court. The community pool area will consist of an indoor slash outdoor mineral spa and mineral pool with cabanas and massage room. The perimeter wall will consist of a combination of a six-foot-high natural gray CMU block and a six-foot-high block tubular steel fence to visualize, enhance, protect, and blend the multifamily development into its surrounding, while also promoting visibility by law enforcement vehicles from the street. Staff would like to note that all proposed signage will be reviewed and approved as stated in conditions of approval number five. Landscaping is proposed throughout the project site, which includes substantial plantings along the street frontage and the parking area. Landscaping has been designed to balance aesthetic water usage and security objectives. The perimeter along Palm Drive landscaping will consist of desert museum, Palo Verde trees, Arizona Cypress, cork oak, and synthetic turf for ground cover. The parking area will utilize silk twenty-four-foot trees to provide some shading for the parking area. The final landscape and irrigation plans will also be reviewed by the Mission Springs Water District and city staff prior to occupancy. The applicant proposes to construct the project in eight phases beginning in late twenty twenty-two, with an estimated completion date in late fall of twenty twenty-five. Phase one will consist of six buildings along with the clubhouse and the main, main entry point. An initial study was prepared for the proposed multi-residential development. According to the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, section one five zero six three, an initial study shall be prepared to determine if a project would have a significant effect on, on the environment. In the case of the proposed project, where the project was analyzed in a previous SECO document, the initial study can be used to determine pursuant to adopted mitigated negative declaration, which of a project's effects were adequately examined by adopted mitigated negative declaration. The initial study determined that impacts from the proposed project would be similar to those described in the previous project MND. The initial study recommended further study of those resources to determine the appropriate SECO document. The analysis from the technical studies is summarized in the MND addendum attached. The project, the proposed project will add four hundred and two residential units to the city, which amount to approximately ten point four percent of the three thousand eight hundred and seventy-three residential units assigned to Desert Hot Springs through the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, also known as RINA. The proposed project will help the city meet the allocation, and it will also encourage other potential residential development. Furthermore, the proposed development will provide an additional housing type currently not available, available in the city of Desert Hot Springs. With that said, city council may adopt with amendments, if desired, one of the following. One, a resolution to uphold Planning Commission's, Planning Commission's decision. Two, a resolution to overturn Planning Commission's decision. Or three, provide other direction as city council deems fit. That concludes my report, I am available if you have any questions, and the project team is also available. Thank you.
Keep your leg, I'm gonna sneeze, sorry. Our next item is number two, which is the entertain questions of staff by council. This is a direct questions to staff from our city council, if you have any before I open the public hearing. Don't see anybody. Yeah, go ahead.
And I've provided these questions to staff ahead of time, just so that they could provide good answers or substantive answers. And I just wanted to, how many parking spaces are provided in this project for residents and guests? Do we have that number?
So the project is proposing eight hundred and ninety-seven parking, covered, uncovered, and ADA.
Eight hundred and ninety-seven?
Yes.
And how many guest parking spaces?
Ninety-three guest, eight hundred and four for guests, and that includes the ADA.
Okay, and I understand our parking standard is two point three parking spaces per unit thereabouts, and this is meeting that, correct?
The project does meet the code, and section seventeen point four eight point zero four zero, two bedrooms, requires two covered and one uncovered guest space for every five units.
Okay, we had a problem with another development where you were here, they had point nine, and they swore up and down those wouldn't be causing a problem, and so, of course, it ended up causing a problem. Now, do we know how many vehicle trips per day are assumed in the traffic study that we, there's a traffic study done with this, it's got how many cars are going in and out of this project in a day? Do we have that number?
Yes, two thousand, two, two thousand five hundred and fifty-nine daily trips.
Okay, thank you. And that's it, those are my questions, thank you.
Do I have any other questions to staff before I open a public hearing?
Oh wait, I did have one more, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. You know what, that's good, I'm sorry.
All right, at this time, I'm going to open a public hearing, how the public work, hearing works, for those of you that have been here before, I apologize for explaining this, but sometimes we have individuals that have come here for the first time. So the public hearing will open, there is an appellant, and that's the reason that we're here tonight, is that the decision by the Planning Commission who approved this project, is, this is being appealed, and it's being appealed by, I believe, a homeowners association called Skies Haven, and they will get to make testimony to begin with. After that, we'll take testimony of anyone in favor of the appeal, that means reversing the Planning Commission's decision. So anyone that would like to speak in that, I do have a list, we'll also go back and forth, anyone will get your chance. There is quite a few speakers, right now I have nine that are registered to speak, that's not including the appellant, I don't think. So what we do ask is that there is not a time limit on what you can say, but we do ask if you can try to wrap it up in three-ish minutes, and if you're going to continue to repeat what's already been said, the council has already heard it, so we ask that you try not to repeat the same thing over and over again. And then we'll take testimony from anyone imposed of the appeal, meaning to uphold the Planning Commission's decision. There's also a spot for anyone that's neutral, that's just here, wants to speak on the item, that doesn't have a yes or a no, either way, just wants to say some comments. At that time, the appellant, which is the Sky Havens Homeowners Association, will then be able to give any rebuttal if they choose to do so. After that, we'll finalize any comments, and we'll close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no more comments from the public can be made, the council will go into debate at that time. So we're going to start with opening the public hearing, and we'll take testimony from the appellant. Who will be speaking for the appellant? Anyone from the Sky Havens Homeowners Association that's going to speak on behalf of the Sky? Yes, sir, if you'd come forth? Are we gonna have you come forth to the microphone? Is he gonna speak on behalf of the, the homeowners association?
He raised his hand on Zoom.
Okay, Tom, is, is it Tom?
Yeah, Tom Tokar.
Tom?
Tokar, sorry.
I don't, we don't see him on our screen. Is he there? Oh, there he is, Tom, can you hear us? You're gonna need to unmute yourself?
Yeah, I did, okay, I did just re, re.
There you go, you're, are you, are you, you're speaking on behalf of the Sky Havens Homeowners Association?
That's true, correct, and I was wondering if it's possible for me to share my screen?
Is it possible that he can share a screen?
Yeah, let me try to make him a host.
Give you one second, Tom.
Thank you. Okay, I see it's share screen, so I guess that means I can do it, okay. Let's try, here we are. Okay, let me fix this up real quickly, sorry.
Tom, do you have a title with the association, or are you just?
I'm, I'm on, I'm on the board, I am a, I am the treasurer of the HOA Association.
Thank you very much, go ahead.
Okay, you're welcome, yeah, thank you, thank you all, council members and mayor. We appreciate you giving attention and to ensuring that your documented procedures are followed and that this application is not approved without appropriate due diligence. Skies Haven homeowners are interested in progress and encourage the development of residential communities which are in keeping with the Desert Hot Springs desert, desert style of design, low single-family buildings. This presentation has been made with the, in the interest of coming together with the city and the developer in developing a residential community that meets requirements regarding all rules and regulations similar, while being similar in design to existing structures. Our appeal at this stage, and the items documented, may not encompass, encompass all potentially identified items of concern. The Marbella project, as proposed, in our opinion, is in direct conflict with the best interests and building requirements of the city of Desert Hot Springs. Here are some points that we're going to be going over. Incomplete project classification, for the developers' documents and statements, the project hype, type was not fully defined and vetted. According to documentation, it is a condominium or townhouses. Then it was stated at a September eighth meeting that they would be rentals. Two, two master bedroom is usually a rental type of building, because for roommates. If it is a rental complex of one owner, the fact that it is, it is a fact in an apartment complex, and it must meet all zoning and public safety requirements as such. In that case, its size and character within the neighborhood becomes problematic. All but the most expertly managed large apartment complexes tend to face recurring issues of noise, security cleanliness. If this project were to become a four hundred and two-unit apartment complex, such as, such community experience issues would make it unsuited in its proposed location, especially because it's adjacent to two senior citizen communities of single homes, Skies Haven and Vista Montana. Okay, an application presented by the developer on October thirteenth, twenty twenty, at the planning meeting was incomplete. It clearly states in the CUP that incomplete application submissions will not be accepted. We found several violations, but it was accepted anyway at the November planning meeting. Some of the items include CUP submittal items are, are missing, like roof, roof mount error and heating equipment, which I understand has been addressed, but there are plenty more, roof plan, gutters, down sprouts, trash container location, mailbox location, carport design elevation, and all the details miss, missing from that. And the problem is, is that the site, is that all these things were approved, and, and, I mean, it was approved without these things being put up as a, or being itemized. More things that we're missing was, is the purpose and intent subsection A of seventeen oh four dot oh two oh is to preserve and enhance established residential neighborhoods, and allow for and encourage the infill at a prevailing scale and character. Multifamily fill-in, single-family neighborhood, section A says, new fill-in, multifamily integrated to existing neighborhoods must be compatible in mass-scale architectural treatments and provide privacy. Subsection eight setbacks missing, we have various things missing on these things for this, and this project will greatly impact the privacy and enjoyment of our community, and I think others. There were other items missing of that they'll have safe access to open space, item two required common open space should be conveniently located for the majority of you, units. Violation example, conditional use permits. We asked about these, these items, and every time we asked about these items for roof plans, down plans, roof equipment, cross-sections, air conditioners, the city's response was, has has no responsive documents at this time. And that is our biggest concern. We do not have documents. It's like, we asked for documents and they're not there, but they're supposed to be there to be approved. This project is a violation of section seventeen oh four oh two oh, sections A and B, purpose of intent. Approving the Marbella Villa's project as currently presented violates that, which refers to the purpose and intent of the current Desert Hot Springs planning code, and that it is because the scale and architectural design are grossly incompatible with the existing single-family residential neighborhoods that surround it on several sides. A fifty-five or thirty-five-foot, eight-inch-tall building that is fifteen away from an existing single-story dwelling will not preserve and enhance established residential neighborhoods. A project that's four hundred and two units with two and three stories high does not remotely match or enhance existing architectural character, scale, size, or intensity of neighborly, neighboring dwellings. At the minimum, the project buildings near the single-family home should be single-story with pitch roofs with a roof wall treatment that would somewhat match the existing single-family homes that are on the other side of Skies Haven in size and character. For this reason, the current design and scale does not fulfill the purpose and intent section of seventeen oh four oh two oh. Why did this, why did the city of Desert Hot Springs zone this residential land, residential high density, allowing a project of a thousand potential residents with one main access road in and out, Palm Drive? The city failed to give interesting par, interested parties notice of the zoning change earlier in twenty twenty. It was buried, and transparency was lacking. This project is situated in a location where other nearby established communities are low-density, one-story, single-family homes, and retired residential communities. One hotel across the street and the grocery outlet, both of which are commercial properties, do not overwhelm or significantly block surrounding residential properties. I'd like to add that we got more notice about the grocery outlet coming in than we did for this project. This area needs to be rezoned, or an agreement has to, has to be come up with as to the type of buildings that can be built on this location. The proposed complex would stand on Palm Drive at the gateway of the city and near the center of it, yet its height, size, and wall structures would visually overwhelm other homes in the area. This property is zoned differently than the surrounding housing and is wedged into the center of it. Such one-story housing is a traditional format for Desert Hot Springs. Where occasional multifamily housing exists, it is comparatively modest in height and size. Large and tall walled communities do not aesthetically fit into the city's central area. We went, we've been going through this project since September of twenty twenty, when we first found out about it. We've had the, we've, there's a list here, you all have copies of it, of the various times that we came before the board, asked for extensions because we were not getting any documents that were requested. Other areas of concern. Infrastructure of Palm Drive is unable to accommodate the increased track of, traffic of what? Two thousand vehicles plus vehicles a day, I heard? I'd invite any city council person to try to leave our complex at five o'clock, and you'll see how Palm Drive can't take it. You, installation of one traffic light at Palm Drive and Ebony to Campanera will help diffuse, how will that be diffusing the thousand vehicles entering the intersection several times a day? And where is the traffic study that indicates this influx of residents will not prove detrimental to local residents? Develop, the developers indicating revised project that will have less traffic noise. The report submitted indicates that there will be a decline in vehicles when going from a senior to a multifamily project. That's the other issue we have, is that there have been conflicting reports of what kind of development this is. Since the initial application, and then the MND, which is based on the environmental study done fourteen-plus years ago, more businesses have been developed, built immediately north on Palm Drive. Grocery outlet, quick quack car wash, Taco Bell, the live new library, and most recently, permission for an RV park on Two Bunch Palms was granted. All of this is going to squeeze the one north-south road we have in that area, which is Palm Drive. God forbid, we have a major catastrophe or a major accident, and people need to move through there. Traffic is backed up with increased likelihood of the property, and it's a personal hazard. Palm Drive already has frequent accidents, injuries, and deaths. Morning and evening gridlock is not going to entice people to move to DHS. And there are two senior communities within close distance of the personal project, and no other entrance by this project other than Palm Drive. This is, where is the environmental study showing the effect of all these vehicles on the surrounding environment? Decreased home values from having the pluses of our homes, you know, quiet retirement, privacy nature, turned into negatives. Noise, no view, no nature, no privacy with two- and three-story buildings overlooking our homes. The noise of potential, of a potential thousand residents will also have a negative impact on our two senior communities who moved out of noisy communities to enjoy peace, quiet, and desert vistas, now, which will now be a potentially obscured by the two- and three-story buildings that are not in compliance with building properties which align with existing structures. Other areas of concern include placement of dumpsters, which requires the trucks to back up almost the entire length of the project, creating a dangerous situation for children, blocking vehicles part, which are parked in hammerhead drives, and creating a noisy situation when reversing several times a week. Not to men, no mention of procedures in place to mitigate power blackouts and water conservation. No common sidewalk for pedestrians inside the complex, especially children going to the playground. Health, life, and safety. Where is it shown as the entire project proposal towards the exist, pardon me? Life, health, and safety. Where is it, where is this shown in this entire project? Review. Incomplete CUP approved by the city planning council needs to be completed per, by the applicant, per the guidelines established by the city planning council. Many of the required findings are not sites specific, and do not adequately address the threshold of consistency with adopted city standards, as outlined in the adopted required findings and the city's general plan. Answers to questions on rezoning, and why a decision was made by the DHS zoning committee to put a high-density residential neighborhood with one, right in the middle of Palm Drive, with only Palm Drive as an access? And why is section one seven oh four oh two oh, sections A and B, being blatantly ignored? In order to meet and maintain current residential standards, structures must be one-story, single, single dwellings. We conclude that the only suitable project type for this size and location would be a better-quality conventional condominium complex, i.e., one limited by its HOA charter to own our occupants only. And if necessary, temporary rental of units by owners is allowed, there must be time limited, and the total number of units be allowed, that are allowed to be rented out, be also be limited. Any use of units primarily for short-term vacation rentals should be expressly prohibited. Since this is the only residence format that would be appropriate, these restrictions must be codified in advance into clear and specific restrictions by the city of Desert Hot Springs. Discoverable items. There are significant documents which have not been provided to the commission that are required for an item to move to the planning commission. There are significant documents that have not been provided as required under the application for this development to move from the planning commission to city council. The CUP was not held to the same standard of other proposed development CUPs, especially as regarding to existing developments. When we discovered these documents were not part of the published record for the last planning meeting, we filed a public records request for these documents. We were told in writing that these documents are not available. If this is the case, then it's within your authority, and it is your obligation to find that the application is incomplete and must be returned to the planning commission with instructions that city staff bring you a complete application for your review. Our conclusion, the lack of transparency and accounting on this project being fast-forward for approval when specific examples of why this project should not move forward due to incomplete CUPs have been, have been presented. A request to the city council to review how the city planning commission approved an incomplete CUP, and did not review the application to make sure that CUP guidelines were addressed and consistently applied, just as for other development applicants. Asking your city staff to work it out without you addressing each item here would be to take deliberation, deliberation of this project out of public view. And we feel we've had enough secrecy already. We would like to, we would like the record to note that each planning commissioner has been provided a copy of the doc, of a document titled resentment to Desert Hot Springs Planning Commission, and city staff dated ten, five, twenty twenty. We respectfully request of the city council, one, specifically address each and every example that we have identified, two, establish findings for each of those items, and three, that you vote on each item by incorporating each item into whatever motion you craft. And our final conclusion is the Marbella project proposal should be rejected by the city of Desert Hot Springs City Council for not adhering to the CUP application requirement. And it does not follow health, welfare, and safety requirements as outlined by California state law. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Ladies and gentlemen, due to the fact that this is a state process, but I'm sorry, state law requires a process, you can't persuade the vote either way by the city council. If you clap, we will have to ask you to be removed from the audience at this time in public process. Not scolding you, I'm just saying that is the law. We just have to announce that when that happens, and, you know, you can do the happy fingers, just. With that, I know there's a lot of speakers, and we're on Zoom, and we're in person. So, we're going to try with the Zoom first. And what we're going to do is when we, when we open up, the public here is open, when we call on your name, we're going to be taking the in favor. And what that means in favor is that you're in favor of reversing the planning commission's decision to approve this project. So, when I ask you if you're in favor, you need to say yes or no. We're going to take them in order. So, if you're not in favor, we'll call, we'll have you sit back down or stay on Zoom, and we'll call you back when we get to the opposition. I don't know why I couldn't remember that word. So, first, again, we're going to open up, take testimony from those in favor. The list I have here, are those Zoom?
They've registered, but some of them are actually here in person, so.
Tim Crump, are you here?
He is on Zoom.
Okay, Tim, are you in favor? And we'll get you unmuted here. Tim, there you are. If you can just unmute yourself? You're still not unmuted? There you go.
Can you hear me now?
We can. Are you in favor of the, the appeal?
I'm in favor of the appeal.
Please make your comments.
Yeah, my comments really are to challenge the, you folks to, to look into what Tom just went over, and, and these inconsistencies that we've been dealing with all along. A lot of these things, I find my neighbors and friends dealing with and finding these problems with these applications, when really it should be the city of Desert Hot Springs doing it, instead of, you know, the people in Skies Havens doing it. But, you know, there's a lot of problems, there's a lot of things that haven't been done. And, you know, I'm a ten-year resident, and I know I have many friends on the outside. They're going to be dealing with these three-story buildings and two-story buildings right inside their yard almost. So, you know, I'm, I'm against it, and I want you folks to look into this, not just pass it on. And, and that's all I've got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim, for your comments. Well, who's, who's next on your list?
Suzanne Wims.
Suzanne, we're going to bring you up on the screen here. There you are. You'll just have to unmute yourself?
Okay.
And Suzanne, just to confirm, you are in favor of the appeal?
I am in favor of the appeal.
Please make your comments.
Thank you, thank you. So, good evening, council members. My name is Suzanne Wims, and I'm a resident of Skies Haven. I'd like to thank the other Desert Hot Springs residents who are speaking tonight, and also the members of the press who are attending and listening to what's going on. I also want to go onto record that last week, and when the city posted the agenda, I beg to differ with the opinion of the city attorney. When residents are directed in these COVID times to a city website, and there's information there, I don't believe it's the duty of the residents to check all the information on the website and cross-check it with the information they received via the handwritten, you know, the mailed notice. So, I think that was a great flaw, and I just want to go on the record saying that. So, the updated appeal was a thousand pages that we had visible to us last Thursday. The agenda was only available then. We had three business days to renew this. It feels like this is a David and Goliath scenario. The city staff and developer have numerous resources at their disposal, while we, as citizens, have a ground roots movement. And we have uncovered inconsistencies which were not addressed until we brought them up. And I think that's disgraceful, right? We just don't know. We don't understand how this project got approved and moved to the city council for approval. The point is, we don't object to a community next door to us. We welcome it, but it has to be the right type of community in order to blend, not necessarily blend in, but work with the rest of the city. And this appeal was brought about by several factors that we've documented in our presentation. And the primary concern, once again, is the lack of oversight by the city planning committee approving a project which didn't meet CUP guidelines. Now, tonight, you're probably going to see they adjusted it, and they've answered all of these things. And this brings up the question of how much attention to detail is given to other projects in our city. The planning council didn't do their review of this project, and only asked questions when we brought them up to the city staff. So, as Tim mentioned, there's a definite lack of transparency into the planning and traffic for this city. The traffic study that was done in two thousand seventeen mentions the project opening in two thousand nineteen. And the site plan in the study is not the same as recently submitted plans. So, the two thousand seventeen traffic study references future traffic volumes. There's a percentage ratio. But this report was based on the project opening in two thousand nineteen. It also did not take into consideration the increase in growth. And the other development location map, and I'm referencing to page five eighty-two, doesn't take into consideration any of the new features that we have, the library, the grocery outlet, the new RV park that's coming to Two Bunch Palms. So, I'm sure you can understand our concern. I also want to reference the two thousand nineteen negative, the MND on the traffic references disputable information. It seems unrealistic that a senior development would have more traffic than a multifamily residential traffic, uh, community. So, for example, a senior community, you perhaps have two people living in a comp, in the apartment, and they go out, they do their shopping, et cetera. In a multifamily community, you're going to have people going to work every day, taking their children to school, visitors, et cetera. So, I strongly urge the city council to look at four point three point fifteen, where it says that going from a senior to a multifamily residential community would reduce the vehicular trips daily. I would also like to reference that the city planning council indicated at the meeting when they approved that, you know, their hands were tied, they couldn't do anything. And this really is not the case. The state has indicate, well, the state has not indicated that future housing be provided at the expense of current residents and without the appropriate planning. In fact, the SEQUA guidelines are clearly defined, and this project does not meet the substantive criteria required. The city staff may feel that they have overcome or answered our concerns about missing or incorrect information. However, for that reason alone, this project must go back to the city- However, for that reason alone, this project must go back to the city planning commission for review. I've reviewed other CUPs for new buildings and it does not appear that the criteria for this project being substantially in line with other low rise buildings and the surrounding area is being met. This Marbella project will have us waking up to buildings towering over our community with no expectation of privacy and will completely eradicate our views, which is why we moved here. A couple more points. I was also interested to learn that the applicant, Joakim W. Wolf, on behalf of Wolf Family Trust and Caso Development filed the application. So I decided to take a look at Caso Development. Well, their business license is suspended. So I don't understand how an application can be made with somebody being represented and their business license is suspended. And that's according to the California Secretary of State. To close, I would like to say that the lack of oversight of the city planning council on this project is disappointing. I'm hoping that the city council members will give consideration to the facts that a project such as this with so many errors, emissions and which could impact our community negatively in so many areas. And I ask that you deny the approval if this project is presented for the health, safety and welfare of all residents. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker?
It's our last Zoom speaker and it's Leonard Saunders.
Leonard, we're going to have you up on the screen and have you unmute yourself. Leonard, I see your name, just need you unmute yourself. You just had yourself unmuted. There you go. And Leonard, just Leonard, just for the record, you are in favor of the appeal, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, please make your comments.
Okay, good evening, council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this day. I am a resident of Skies Haven and I know from my conversations with residents in Skies Haven, how distressing this project has been for them. You know, with the anticipation that they're going to lose their privacy and that they're going to not be able to have the view that they want to have and that these buildings are going to be towering over them and yeah, and the safety aspects is with the increased amount of traffic. And so I would like to, you know, echo Tom's and well, everybody that's spoken comments because they're very relevant to this approval. And I don't think that the city council should be approving a project that, you know, that has so many problems with it. I know the state has been, you know, kind of pushing the the counties to develop, you know, low cost, low cost rental housing. And perhaps that's the reason why this project was kind of fast tracked without having sufficient due diligence. You know, there because, you know, like I wasn't, I asked, you know, like, how many, how many of these negative effects has have been mitigated? You know, to, you know, to, when I went to the, when I emailed the city and they said, no, they haven't been mitigated. They've just, you know, like, they've just basically come back with the same proposal that they initially had. And then I was somewhat surprised because I went on the on the DHS site and I and I took a look at the the information pertaining that they were posting now pertaining to, you know, Marbella. And I found that a lot of the code violations have now been addressed. But on the other hand, you know, those code violations shouldn't have been raised by the planning commission and it shouldn't have got that far. One of my other concerns is that there's been a lack of consultation with the city and with Marbella. You know, like basically the city came in and rezoned, you know, more Marbella to make it a high density development. So, you know, basically they could get away with, you know, saying, okay, well, it meets the code requirements, but it actually moved from a low density to a high density project. And again, this wasn't done, this was just done, I think, in May of two thousand and twenty. And it was done without any input from the the developments that were already there. And, you know, just to reiterate, this is an infill development and it should match the architectural style of the surrounding buildings, which definitely doesn't. And so, you know, like when I take a look at, you know, these, all of these different factors, I know that the city has probably been under pressure from the state to create this, you know, low cost housing development. But, you know, is our area the correct place for that development to be done? You know, like, I I don't think so. And we actually submitted or Suzanne Wims submitted a document from the homeowners indicating some viable alternatives that could have been examined by Marbella and the city to see if there wasn't a better solution to this problem. But again, there's been no feedback from either to, you know, to basically indicate whether they are even considering any of the ideas or, you know, have considered them. So, and yeah, I think, you know, those residents that have to wake up in the morning that usually have a nice view of the valley and will be, you know, fifteen feet away looking into you know, like a large wall are going to, you know, experience a fair amount of distress. And this has created a lot of amount of stress for Skies Haven residents because nobody in our res, you know, if our, you know, the residents wants that to happen. Okay, and you know, if if for some reason that you know, like, and one of the thoughts that have been expressed too was that there should be a substantial buffer zone. And that was one of the, that was one of the suggestions for if the residences don't match an architectural style, provide a large buffer zone. And if we had to have, which I hope we don't, but if we have to have the development that's proposed next door, it would defray a lot of that, you know, a lot of the problem if there were proper setbacks. And you'll setbacks of fifteen feet. You know, that's nothing. If I put, you know, like a two story building out in front of my house or even in my backyard fifteen feet away and I make a two story, what am I going to see? I'm going to see a big wall. And I don't think anybody wants that. I don't think the council would want the developer to come in and block off air access to, you know, to, you know, like a view of the surrounding areas, you know. And the other thing that was problematic was where Marbella is is building. We had an emergency exit and that emergency exit will be effectively blocked. So I think that the, I think, you know, like the city and Marbella will have to, you know, work together in order to provide an alternate emergency exit for us or they're going to have to provide a substantial setback so that there can be traffic movement, you know, through that area. Also, I don't think that Marbella's proposal for their setback on Palm Drive is appropriate. Palm Drive is the gateway to the city. You know, the tourists are come through and, you know, it should be inviting. It shouldn't be right out to the, you know, very basically within fifteen feet of the curb. I don't think that they can do a good enough job of aesthetically of making that inviting. Not, not only that, yeah, it is would make a puddle neck. And if the city wants to, say, expand Palm Drive sometime in the future, it would make it very expensive for them to do so. I think, you know, if, you know, the residents, if this this loss of view, loss of privacy, the failure of the curtain project to provide residents of Skies Haven with the quiet enjoyment of their properties which they have previously enjoyed, I think that, you know, and they need, you know, and mitigate against the smell of garbage in the dumpsters. I think, you know, like especially on Skies Haven's southern border, I think that the residents who experience those effects should be compensated. You know, you just don't come in without consultation and do that kind of development that is going to adversely affect the current residents without pumping, compensating them in some way. So anyways, I think, you know, for those residents that, you know, do experience those very negative consequences of this development, I think that they should receive sufficient compensation to come somewhat defray these negative, these negative effects that they're having upon them. Yep. So for these reasons, the approval of the Marbella pro proposal in its current form needs to be rejected. The project needs to be redesigned until acceptable standards are met and will be of benefit to the surrounding develops developments and not a detriment. I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Leonard. That's all the speakers we have on Zoom. Mr. Soriano, we'll start with the public speakers in in person.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have three individuals, Barbara Eastman, followed by Donna Wardine, followed by Diane Powell.
Barbara, you in you in favor of the appeal? Please turn on the mic. It's a button down there to turn around. There you go.
I live at Vista Montana, so I, our community is going to be impacted by this. The traffic especially, traffic is very bad now. And this will just create more. And most of the people have said their concerns and I agree with what they're saying. I think there's a safety issue, big time. I'm not against development. I think that our city is growing and something smaller or more aesthetic would be appropriate. So I would ask our council and mayor to use good judgment, common sense in reviewing this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Barbara. Donna, you're next. Who will be up after Donna, Gerald?
Diane Powell.
Thank you. I've told you who I am. I am Donna Wardine. I'm a resident at Vista Montana. I've been, I love Desert Hot Springs. I love everything we have to offer. This community that I'm not in, that I'm in favor of turning away from, because you didn't ask me.
Sorry, Donna, are you in favor of the appeal?
I'm in favor of the appeal, sir. So I am very disappointed in the job our planning commission is doing for our city in this respect. I feel the lack of foresight in approving this two and three story, both senior and family, four hundred and two unit housing project to be located on the busiest street in Desert Hot Springs. And I find it disappointing disappointing. It does not enhance our neighboring homes, not in Skies Haven and certainly not in Vista Montana as well. Yes, we are a welcoming, am I there? I'm a speaks color. Yes, we are a welcoming city. However, traveling in and out of Desert Hot Springs on Palm Drive is already tough enough. And unfortunately, it has been deadly. There was speaking of that earlier. That's awful. So as we all know, Desert Hot Springs is basically a service community. Most of our working folks move, moving down valley, in and out of Desert Hot Springs, do use Palm Drive. Sometimes using the left hand turn lane as a driving lane. How dangerous is that? I've seen it. They whiz by me down the middle of the street. And it's not a good thing. So we're barely making it on the traffic patterns on desert, on Palm Drive. So adding traffic from another community of a four hundred and two homes makes it really tough. Four hundred and two homes, one or two cars each, four to eight hundred cars. We talked about that earlier. That was disclosed. Four hundred and two homes at a hunt at one to five family members is four hundred and two to over two thousand people moving up and down Palm Drive in increasing an already tough traffic situation. I think the number that was mentioned early was earlier was two hundred and fifty-nine trips in and out of their gate. Sky Haven has done a very thorough job of their presentations. They are single family, single story. We are in Vista Montana as well. The new community that is proposed is not neighborhood enhancing. That, in my opinion, and the opinion of those for whom I speak, it is unreasonable, poor planning for our area. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Donna. Gerald?
Yes, so Diane Powell actually requested to speak last. So next speaker is Fred Alvarez.
Fred, you're in favor of the appeal, correct?
Mayor, councilman, staff, DHS members, mayor, councilman, staff, DHS residents. My name is Fred Alvarez. I'm president of Skies Haven. I'm in favor of the appeal. We had a sales pitch by Jennifer. However, that last name is provided.
Mr. Alvarez, you cannot direct any comments at any staff members except for the city council by law. Please do, please restrain yourself from that.
Okay, can I ask that the new housing development slides were put up earlier be put up again?
Which one would you like put up?
New housing development, single family homes.
Which slide are you talking about? The ones that we provided or the ones that?
Or you're in this, in this presentation. I want to point out that all of them were single family, single story. There were no two story and three story buildings there. If next to you, wherever you live, I can't, I can direct it to the whole council. If somebody puts up a three story building, even a two story building, you're a single story and they have a balcony that they can sit outside of and looking down on you? Okay, now the other third thing that I hadn't planned to say, I am very happy with the presentation that we put on so far. You will note that we have some very competent people in our park and that we are watching you. We're not against a project going in there, but we're against allowing two and three story buildings, multifamily residences. Something that came up, you mentioned grocery outlet. Grocery outlet built a new building on our northern border. And while this was taking place, they wrote us letters. They asked us if we had questions. When we had a problem, they met with us. We didn't have a problem. Turned out our water line was on their property. We had to work it out. We, these people, none of that, we get none of that. We we talked to a blank wall. Instead, they go through you and you approve a project that I think should not have been approved. We at Skies Haven have so far put up fifteen hundred dollars for this appeal. We have spent other monies. We have put some monies aside. We, at the next board meeting, plan to put more money aside to keep an eye on you. And I hope that you will do the right thing and reverse yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. Next speaker, Cheryl.
Next speaker is Ken Romanek, followed by Robin Yamas.
Ken, you're in favor of the appeal, correct?
I am in favor of the appeal. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Please make your comments.
Okay. First of all, I just heard from Susan on Zoom that there was a new report, a traffic study in two thousand and seven completed. I'm not aware. And I also heard just recently that we received eight hundred or a thousand pages in the last three working days. I haven't even seen those. So I don't even know what's in there. I'm going off of everything that was given to me by the city clerk in the week prior, which was all the old two thousand and seven reports. So my point is here, before I even start, do, what new reports do we have existing for the new track map? Because when you change a track map according to CEQA, you have to change whatever's changed in the reports. But they need to be changed to address the changes in the new track map. So if we're, I'm sitting here going off the two thousand and six track map. Even the, was it the July? You guys had another one in June twenty twenty? When you have a new track map, you need complete new set of research reports, noise, air quality, everything. So please educate me on this new eight hundred pages or a thousand pages? The staff, I mean, do you guys know or?
We can't have a back and forth. So this is your opportunity to say that. I will say this on that. What they were referring to was the thousand pages that are in our packet today. It was released on Thursday.
Thursday?
Yes.
I have not seen them. I have not.
It's the public packet that's released for the meeting.
Okay. Well, I'll try to eliminate certain areas in my.
There you go. You got a copy.
Thank you. I appreciate it. You guys give me about two, three days? I'll drive back. No, I'm joking. Okay. First of all, I'm going to go off some of my old notes based on the two thousand and seven, just to give you a picture of what happened back then and what should be happening now since we received these. And I have not even had a chance to go through these. Local planning commission approved the Marbella three hundred and ninety-eight senior apartment project included multifamily. Three hundred and ninety-eight senior apartment project to include multifamily. CEQA requires state and local agencies, government to inform public of potential environmental impacts of a project and to reduce those environmental impacts to the extent of feasible through an M and D report. I'm debating if I should use this card here. Okay. Basically, potential environment, significant impacts, and completed M and D by a consultant, previous M and D report, Stephen Carlin. I couldn't locate the guy. I tried to locate him. I can't find him to discuss his M and D report. He's got some problems in his M and D report. The city planning department did find potential environmental impacts. That is why an M and D was done in two thousand and seven. And recently, the Marbella addendum, environmental assessment, number seven dash six by EPD Solutions. EPD Solutions admitted their July two thousand and nineteen report was based solely off the city's two thousand and seven M and D, which is no longer in existence if the track map has been changed. They said no new findings, all, everything has been mitigated. I personally consulted with one of the California's top three traffic expert consultants in traffic. And I spent over an hour on the phone with him discussing the Marbella project. And in a one-hour discussion analyzing the traffic report on Marbella, the fact was stated. If the word senior was removed from the project and only multifamily was used for the Marbella project, multifamily was used for the Marbella project, that would change the project's traffic significantly to triple or quadruple the daily traffic off the Marbella project. A two thousand and seven traffic report, page sixteen, Trip Generates Seventh Edition, year two thousand and three, which was available at the time of the traffic report, was concluded. It states two thousand six hundred and seventy-five daily vehicle trips. That's based on being a senior project with some multifamily. Now, with the two hundred and three to two hundred and forty-seven daily morning and evening trips that will occur off the project, you now have to triple those numbers of what's going to be happening off the Marbella project if it is strictly multifamily. The Kuzman Traffic Report was based in two thousand and six track map, the R1 residential surrounding Marbella. His report was based strictly on R1 zoning around the project. No high-density reports were included, which is going to, we have one across the street now rezoned for high-density across the street from the Marbella project on, what's it called, Fifteenth Street? I think it's Fifteenth Street we're talking about. So if this new high-density project, Marbella, is strictly going to be exiting onto Fifteenth Street only, and then the Palm Drive is strictly going to be emergency access, what about the new high-density project across the street on Fifteenth Street on the corner? When that project is built, you're going to have the same amount of traffic, if not more, exiting in the same place that Marbella is going to be exiting. So we have a problem right there. The traffic studies that I've seen do not include this analysis. Anyway, by adding four units and vehicles to the twenty twenty, if a new track map is being used, the June twenty twenty track map, by adding four units and vehicles, voids the old traffic report. And I guess we're avoiding the two thousand and seven report if we have a new one. And it voids the noise report and the air quality report. Those laws change every five years by state and federal greenhouse gas emission laws. This would trigger, if these reports are still in existence, this would trigger a CEQA new EIR report. And can we show the high-density map that I asked to be included?
What do you, which, we've had multiple maps tonight, so you're going to have to be more specific. Which one did you ask for?
Well, the one that, and it was Tom listening? You out there, Tom?
Tom's already spoken, so are you asking for something from his or?
I asked Susan and Tom to make sure that my picture of the high-density zoning would be included in this display so everybody can see what's going on with the high.
Well, you provided them with a, is what you're saying. Did, we didn't see it during the presentation. Is Tom still out there?
He is. Would you like me to give him access to share his screen?
That'd be fine. While you continue your comments, Ken.
Ask him if he's got or Susan has that map, the high-density zoning maps. Did you want to tell me?
I just got announced. I got to use the restroom. I'm sorry.
Sure, take a break.
I can hear you while you're talking. We're not taking a break. What happens is the whole thing is plumbed in. So if someone does use the back, they just don't want you to think they're being rude.
No problem.
We're just old people, so.
I do not, Ken, I do not have that. Suzanne has it, but I don't, I can text her. I don't see her online right now.
Can you continue your comments without the slide?
All right. Let's switch over to the high zoning.
Would one of our, would one of our slides help you in making your point?
Sure, if you have the high zoning.
Could you, are you, you talking about a high zoning map?
On Palm Drive, strictly from Marbella going south on Palm Drive on the west side. All those properties that were rezoned May twenty twenty.
We'll pull up a map there and see if that helps you.
It's a colored map.
Mayor, Suzanne is saying she has the map.
Okay, great. Yeah, please let her in and have her share her screen.
Okay, hold on one second here.
All right, Suzanne, if you can just, go ahead and, go ahead and find your screen there. I'm going to have Ken continue his comments.
Yeah, hold on a second.
Okay, Susan, please don't speak. Just go ahead and share your screen. We're going to have Ken continue his comment. Go ahead, Ken.
Okay. When the city council rezoned, planning commission, city council rezoned the six or seven or five lots heading south on Palm Drive from Marbella south on the west side. Those are huge twenty-five, forty-acre parcels. They're all zoned for high-density. That's the one. Okay, the big orange spot, if you see on the screen, that is Sky Haven. Then the brown ones going south, which is on, down on the picture, that is your high-density zoning that has been approved for future development. Now, Marbella, the heavy black line you see below the first brown square, that is Fifteenth Street. So you're going to have Marbella exiting all those vehicles a day onto Fifteenth Street. Then when the project across the street is built, we don't know what kind of tentative map he's going to have, whether he's going to buy the other properties. We don't know what he's going to do. Now, has a planning department, they should have considered in this new traffic study, what's going to happen with Marbella when the new high-density project is built? And they're going to be strictly exiting on Fifteenth Street. Now, they got all this traffic. Now, remember, the one expert I spoke to, spent over an hour on the phone with him, he's a traffic expert. He said that you might as well, whatever numbers we had for Marbella existing from two thousand and seven, he said triple them. That's going to be your traffic. That's going to be coming out of Marbella because we're talking families, teenagers, babysitters, you know, back and forth. Everybody's got to make a couple of trips a day, plus go to work. These aren't senior citizens like us where we just sit there all day or go play golf once in a while. So you're going to be developing all these brown spots and the traffic it's going to make on Palm Drive is going to be unbelievable. So I hope the city council would reconsider what's going on here, throw things back on the planning stages and start amending some things, especially traffic-wise. And also for Sky Haven, I would like to see the, their north property line setback pushed back to twenty, thirty feet if possible. Otherwise, we're going to have two-story buildings within ten, ten, fifteen feet overlooking their backyards. And when those teenagers are going to be out in their balconies or they're having their parties on Friday, Saturday night, and seniors are going to bed, you know, we're going to bed at eight, nine, ten o'clock at night. What's going to happen when everybody's partying on Friday, Saturday night on their balconies, smoking, drinking, partying? It's going to affect Sky Haven. City council needs to consider all those facts, including health and safety of the seniors that are going to be walking up and down the street, going to the stores like we do now. We're going to have all these teenagers, which is fine, but pray to God no seniors get robbed. I saw a lady at Vons get robbed right in front of me. I would have stopped the guy, but I'm sixty-five years old. And this guy took off like a jackrabbit, so I backed off. I helped the lady get off the ground, and that's all I can do. But that was just one instance at Vons. So would you guys please consider everything we've discussed? I appreciate it. I appreciate it for this time. And I want everybody to have a good day.
Thank you. And for the record, the specific plan that's being shown is the old specific plan for the city of Hoshford, correct?
That is our current zoning map.
That is the current zoning map?
Yes, it's residential high-density and the parcel fronting Palm is mixed use.
I saw something about Walmart on there, so I thought it was the old plan. Our next speaker?
Robin Yamas, followed by Diane Powell.
Hi, Robin. Are you in favor of the appeal?
Yes.
Please say your comments.
My comments are, is, I moved here because I was in a bad accident in twenty seventeen and I had a stroke and recently I had heart surgery and I'm going to be sixty this year. And my home overlooks the south fence line to Marbella. So everybody's going to be able to see into my home, to see into my backyard. Their trash cans are located right along, they'll be, their trash cans will be right there located on the south fence line of my home, which will infect, interrupt my life and my health. My doctors have already told me that. Thanks to Marbella, I'm probably going to have to put up another home for sale at my age and move. I don't think that's fair to a senior citizen in Skies Haven. We didn't move here and we didn't ask for this. And the traffic is going to be so bad that you guys are not taking into consideration Palm Drive. Right now, it's really bad. We only have one access out to the 10 freeway in case there's an earthquake or something, a major disaster. There's only one lane, then it goes to two on Dillon going to the west. And then going the other way, we're still going to be in Desert Hot Springs. We can't get out of it. And we are on a fault line. So we, we never know when that major earthquake's going to hit. So we got to take a lot of things into consideration here. And when I moved here, I looked into all the considerations, what's going to be built, how the city's going to build up. And at that point in time, when I checked out Marbella, it wasn't going to go to four hundred and twenty homes. It was going to be senior citizen, one-story, which I don't think that would have affected us that much. And the setback, they want to do ten feet to fifteen. We don't have any access road out of there. They're going to have to, we're going to have to have an access road between us for the fire department and everything to get in there. We do not, as of right now. With, with all these new spas coming in and everything else, we do not have the adequate police department to cover a lot of things. And with these new homes, that's even going to make it more worse. And then the other one's going off of Fifteenth Street, which is high-density area. So we really need to take a lot of things into consideration with the city. We need the city council to worry about everybody's safety in the city, just not Skies Haven. Yes, we are the forefront to this, but we are for them doing something on that property, but not to access everybody's life, visitors' lives and everything that are, we want to come to the city. So we really need to take into consideration because I'm already fixing up this home to go, and I don't think that's fair to me. I already sold one home because of a bad situation. I'm going to have to sell a second home from a bad situation? I'm sorry, but I just don't think that's fair to my health. And we have so many senior citizens that are sixty-five and most of them are already in their eighties and nineties in Skies Haven and Vista Montana. So please take into consideration everything that we're saying because it's very important to not only all of us in the city, but all of our visitors, outsiders, everything in our city that's going to be coming here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Cheryl?
Last speaker is Diane Powell.
Diane Powell. Diane, you are in favor of the appeal, correct?
Yes.
Please make your comments.
Yeah, hi. I'm Diane Powell and I'm vice president of Skies Haven HOA. I wanted to just mention about the Fifteenth Street congestion in the Palm Drive. When this development is completed, Fifteenth Street is only going to be constructed from Palm Drive to the entrance of that development. It will not be built Fifteenth Street. It won't be continued on down to Little Morongo Road. So everybody that lives in this development, the new development, Marbella, is going to have to exit their home area and make a left. They can't make a right because Fifteenth Street stops at their entrance. So we're going to have eight hundred, nine hundred, a thousand cars a day trying to get out of that little Fifteenth Street onto Palm Drive. It's going to create a mess. It's going to be a mess. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that, according to all the information that I've read and, and this eleven hundred pages that I printed out, our office printers out of ink now. But I haven't read all of it and I'm happy to give it to any one of you here and you're welcome to read it. Marbella, shown on the site maps, shows a thirteen-point-six density ratio bonus. And reading through these volumes, I see that that density bonus is a result of low-income housing being promised by this developer. Now, I'm told that there's, the low-income housing has been removed and there won't be any low-income housing in Marbella. I'm also told by an attorney that this thirteen-point-six density ratio bonus is illegal if they're not going to have low density or low income. If they're not going to have low densi- or low-income housing, then there shouldn't be any bonus density on this project. It's really overbuilt already, without granting them favors. Now, I'm gonna try to keep this real short. I found, in this volume, a recommendation by the staff to, if, if the city council wants to reject the, the construction of this development, and what the city council has said in order to deny the development, they've gone on to say that the tentative tract map findings, the projection site is not physically suitable for this type of development. And this is from your city couns- from your city staff. If the, if this council wants to reject the development, these are some of the reasons that your staff is recommending. It goes on to say, the, the proj- the project site is a twenty-five-acre parcel, and it goes on, on the north side of Fifteenth, "The project is to develop four hundred and two residential condominiums and a clubhouse, which consists of forty-two residential buildings, including twenty-five two-story buildings, eight units each, and seventeen three-story buildings, twelve units each. However, the project site is mostly surrounded by single-story residential developments. Therefore, the project site is not physically suitable for twenty-five two-story buildings and seventeen three-story buildings." That's your staff memo and information. "The design of the subdivision or the proposed improvements are likely to cause substantial environmental damage or substantially unavoidable injure fish or wildlife, or their habitat." Well, I don't think we have any fish or wildlife there. Although, we do have ground-burrowing owls, which I have talked to the Audubon Society, and they tell me that although they're not endangered, they are on a scarcity of the species. It goes on to say, "The, the project site is physically suitable for the proposed density of development. The proposed map will be for condominium purposes, and is too dense, dense of a project for the location. The proposed use would not be compatible with existing land uses within the general area in which the proposed use is to be located." It goes on to say, "The proposed clubhouse is specifically allowed as a permitted use within the RH and MUC zone, as well as a use that is clearly indicated in the language of the city's general plan discussion on intended uses with the designation. However, seventeen-point-oh-four-point-oh-two-oh of the city's municipal code provides that purpose of the zoning ordinance is to promote the public health, safety, general welfare, and preserve and enhance the aesthetic quality of the city by providing regulations to ensure an approximate mix of land uses in an orderly manner. However, section seventeen dot oh-four dot oh-two-oh also states that in furtherance of this purpose, the city desires to achieve a pattern and distribution of land uses that preserve and enhance established residential neighborhoods. While the surrounding properties of the project site are largely of a mixed-use nature, there are some smaller multifamily residential developments, as well as commercial businesses in the immediate area. The smaller multifamily residential developments located near the project site are single-story buildings. However, the clubhouse is twenty-nine feet, six inches high. The vast difference in height, for example, single-story versus tall clubhouse, indicates that the proposed clubhouse would not be complementary to the existing surrounding established residential neighborhoods. There will be an adverse effect upon desirable neighborhood characteristics. The clubhouse's buildings, massing, architecture, use of exterior finishes, materials, structural elements, colors, lighting, and landscaping indicate that the clubhouse will be that of a well-designed, yet somewhat utilitarian design building, consistent with the overall design characteristics of the vicinity. However, the proposed height of the clubhouse is twenty-nine feet, six inches, is consistent with this established neighborhood residential area, and will not provide for a desirable environment for its neighbors. Therefore, the proposed clubhouse will have adverse effects upon desirable neighborhood characteristics. The proposed use is not approximate at the prescribed location, it's not appropriate at the prescribed location. While the clubhouse will serve the immediate community by providing amenities for the residents, the use is not appropriate for the project site. The project site is primarily surrounded by single-story residential buildings, and the clubhouse is twenty-nine feet, six inches high. Its use is more commercial in nature by providing a meeting place, gym, and swimming pool. Therefore, the clubhouse near established, single-family residential neighborhoods is not appropriate. The proposed use is not consistent with applicable goals and policies of the general plan. Section seventeen dot oh-four dot oh-two-oh of the city's municipal code provides that purpose of the zoning ordinance is to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare, to preserve and enhance the aesthetic quality of the city by providing regulations to ensure an approximate mix of land uses in an orderly manner. Moreover, section seventeen dot oh-four dot oh-two-oh also states that in furtherance of this purpose, the city's desire to achieve a pattern and distribution of land uses that preserve and enhance established residential neighborhoods. While the surrounding properties of the project site are largely of a mixed-use nature, there are some smaller multifamily residential developments, as well as commercial businesses in the immediate area. The smaller multifamily residential developments located near the project site are single-story buildings. However, the clubhouse is close to thirty feet, and is too tall in comparison to the surrounding projects. Therefore, the proposed use of the clubhouse is not consistent with the goal of the city to, to preserve and enhance established residential neighborhoods. And it goes on to say, and this, this is pretty much the end of it. "The proposed residential multifamily development is specifically allowed as a permitted use within the RH and MUC zone, as well as a use that is clearly indicated in the city's general plan discussion on intended uses within the designation. However, section seventeen-point-oh-four-point-oh-two-oh of the city's municipal code provides that purpose of the zoning ordinance is to promote the public health, safety, general wel- welfare, and preserve and enhance the aesthetic quality of the city." I wanna say that again. This section seventeen-point-oh-four of the city's municipal code provides that purpose of the zoning ordinance is to promote the public health, the public safety, general welfare, and preserve and enhance the aesthetic quality of the city by providing regulations to ensure an appro- an approximate mix of land uses in an orderly manner. Moreover, that section also states that in furtherance of this purpose, the city desires to achieve a pattern and distribution of land uses that preserve and enhance established residential neighborhoods. This is from your own staff here, as reasons why this project has to be denied. It has to be stopped. And I'm asking you to use your common sense and take a look at what this development is doing. I think it's really shameful. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other comments in favor of the appeal?
I do.
Please step forward. We can't hear you unless you talk through the mic, so you'll have to come forward. You have to state your name, and you're in favor of the appeal, correct?
Yes, I am. My name's Deborah Lewis, and I reside with my husband in Vista Montana. And we had an HOA board meeting, and Barbara told me about what was gonna be talked about this evening. And I was under the impression, can you, everybody hear me okay? I was under the impression that it was going to be a senior affordable housing project. And now I'm finding out that it's not. And all the information that was talked and brought to everybody's attention tonight is very disturbing to me. I'm very, very disappointed that it's been allowed to get this far without a little more fight for the community. I also just recently had one of my sisters move in with my husband and I. And I will tell you that there is no available affordable housing, let alone senior housing. We've been looking for ten months. And I was so disappointed to find out that it's not affordable senior housing. And I'm urging everybody on this council, everybody that's involved in this project, to please, don't let it go through with all these issues. It would just show such a disrespect to the community and the people that live here. And as far as my sister goes, I don't know when we're gonna find affordable housing for her. We wanted her to stay in Desert Hot Springs, so I could be close to her. She's had some health issues, and now we're going outside, and all the waiting lists are two, three, four, and five, six years out. A lot of affordable housing communities have waiting lists that are closed, because they can't take any more applications. So I'm urging everybody to rethink this, please. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you for your time. Do we have anybody else in favor of the appeal that would like to speak? All right, I'm gonna move to anyone that is in opposition of the appeal, this means upholding the planning commission's decision. Does anybody answer?
Uh, yes, I have Connie Dobriva.
Connie, we'll pull you up here. All right, your comments, please.
My name is Connie Dobriva, I'm actually the environmental consultant who prepared the CEQA document for the city and for the applicant, and I'm here to answer your questions. Just very briefly, during this component, I'll just answer some misconceptions that I heard coming across about what type of environmental document is done, and the basis for that environmental document, and then I'll be available to answer your questions either now or later, at your discretion. So first of all, the environmental document is an addendum to a prior MND. And CEQA, the CEQA guidelines, state law essentially says that a jurisdiction shall prepare an addendum when there were minor technical changes, and none of the conditions under which a project was undertaken have changed. And my job for this project, and that's why I put myself sort of in the mutual category, is that my job was to look at the prior MND, to look at all the prior technical studies that were done, and to compare the impacts of the prior project to the impacts of the current project. And in support of that, we ran new air quality model, we looked at construction impacts. We did look at traffic, which I'll address in a moment. We sent out the biologist to look at the site again, and in fact, what you received in front of you tonight was, you know, in reading some of the appeals, we wanted to really make sure that we were addressing the residents' concerns. And we sent the biologist yesterday to take a look and make sure that, you know, had any new critters moved in, or was there anything that we needed to know about? And what that letter before you today says, no, conditions haven't changed. All the mitigation measures that have always been in place are still going to be in place, and after they're implemented, there will be no impact. So we, we'd looked at the prior MND, we submitted studies and support. They were reviewed by your staff, they were reviewed by your technical staff, traffic engineer, and I think ultimately, as a part of this appeal process, they were also reviewed by your city attorney. So that, I, there, there was an assertion that the, the, the current CEQA document was only done solely based on the prior MND, and that's not true. It's based on its own factual findings. We heard a lot about traffic and some hesitation or sort of disbelief that the, that the senior apartment trip rate would be the same as the multifamily rate. And I just want to clarify, the traffic study and, and the traffic's book of work was approved by your staff. It is based on the Institute of Transportation Engineering, which is the standard that is used throughout the country, throughout the county, and throughout your city. So we used a multifamily rate with a senior apartment rate. We looked at the number of trips that were previously analyzed, and we, we, we did a standard. And the reason that cities and planning departments throughout the state use the same exact rates is because we always wanna be comparing apples to apples. So this was not cherry picked in any way, we used a multifamily rate. We used the rate of the senior apartments of the prior project and compared it. It found that overall, it would reduce trips by a hundred and sixteen daily trips. So, you know, in, in the big picture scheme of things, it's about the same level of trips. I, I do want to also clarify something, that the prior project that we're comparing was three hundred and ninety-eight senior apartments, right? So that was a high-density multifamily rate for seniors. And now we're looking at four hundred and two residential condominium units, but also using a multifamily housing rate. So, um, the numbers are accurate, the numbers compare apples to apples, and it was based on substantial evidence. I, I think, I'll, I'll end with that. There were some issues raised about safety, there were some issues raised about traffic and the existing condition, and gosh, you know, this project should've looked at all the other high-density projects that were approved in May, and it's actually the opposite. This project is in the baseline condition. This project is an, was previously approved for three hundred and ninety-eight units, and now it was also in the pipeline for this consideration tonight, and all the prior technical studies. So the high-rise technical studies across the street knew that this was a project that was approved and not yet built, and that was already in the housing of pipeline. So they had to make sure that our project, on top of their project, didn't cause significant issues. It wasn't the other way around. Because this is a, a one-time approved project that is on the books for the city, at least for environmental purposes and for traffic engineering purposes. So with that, I will stop, but I will be available to answer your questions later on tonight.
Thank you very much for your comments. Robert, any more?
Um, the rest of the speakers are the applicant.
The...
Applicant and the applicant team.
Okay, is there anybody from that team that wants to speak in, in opposition of the appeal? Upholding the planning commission's decision, is anyone else? I don't see anybody unmuting themselves, I don't see anybody standing here.
Uh, yes, we're gonna, this is Elizabeth James, Development Coordinator. David Maldonado is our architect, our lead architect, and he's gonna walk me through a few things, so...
Okay, David?
Yeah, thank you for having me tonight. Dave Maldonado with D33 Design and Planning. If you could share my screen, and I can kinda walk you through some of the questions that the audience had in regards to the site plan? And...
Do I have to do something?
You can go ahead and share your screen, I gave you access to share.
You guys there, I lost you for a second.
You can share your screen at this point, she's giving you access to share.
Okay, let's see. Okay, is it there?
It's coming up right now. There it is.
Okay, this is the, um, kind of talking about the overall site plan and some of the questions that some of the residents had. So to start off with, we have exit on 15th, two exits on 15th. And then we have one over, so you can look, you can see it over to the right at Palm Drive. So those, you know, just want to clarify that. During the overall planning of this site, what we did was we consolidated all the three-story units in the center of the site to have the two stories only face to the north. So if you see those little red asterisks, those indicate the three-story units. The remainder of the units are all two-story. In regards to the clubhouse and not being in a desired location, the clubhouse is probably the furthest point it could be away from the existing residents. So that would be a positive, I would, I would guess. And also it's centered within our development, which is also a positive for the future residents. That way they can walk from the east or west and have, you know, somewhat of an equal walking distance to the clubhouse. I can give you, show you a show you the floor plan of the clubhouse. So the clubhouse, you know, is designed for residential gathering and communication. You know, I think we're gonna have, you know, there's gonna be a mailroom in there, there's gonna be offices. It's, it's loading, hang on just a sec. Here we go. So it'll be a nice grand entrance into the, into the main entry of the, of the clubhouse. We have a multipurpose room over here off to the right that's gonna be facing the pool. Uh, we have a game room for, for the kids, we have a racquetball room. Uh, one of these, we haven't figured it yet because UPS is gonna kind of determine where it's gonna go. But one of these, or maybe two, might be the mailroom for the residents. So the residents will all have access to their, to their mail either, you know, they can walk to the clubhouse or they can get it on their way home. We have a, a second story unit that's, again, has a seating area. And we're thinking this seating area could be, you know, for, for parties or meetings or potentially, you know, now that you know, with our current situation with COVID and people working at home, one of these rooms might just become kind of a, a large living room lounge work area where people could come and work and get out of their unit. So that's, that's some, you know, some of the things that we're looking at now with our current situation. And things just change in design, you know, there's, it's biomorphic, it's always changing. So getting back to the site plan, one of the, the typical site plan layout in a, in a development like this is usually the the circulation is internalized. So between the units, you have, you will have walkways between the units. And then those walkways inherently connect to the rec, to the rec buildings and the rec area. So from east to west, we have walkways that are off the road. So we keep the pedestrian off the residential traffic. And so, you know, residents, kids, people walking, it's a little more safer because there's no conflict between a vehicle and pedestrian access and, and movement. We do have roof plans. I'm not sure why they weren't seen, but we do have roof plans. All our AC units are on top of the roof. There's gonna be parapets up there. So the AC units will not be seen, which helps for, you know, visually it helps on, on a residential development. Uh, one of the comments was, I believe, get back to the site plan. There was a concern about balconies facing to the north. Well, currently, there's only two, there's only two or three units that have balconies facing the north. And, and we would be willing to, to, to alleviate those balconies so there's more privacy to, to the north. But we, we specifically plotted the, the units in the site plan to have respect for the privacy of the residents to the north. Um, let's see. Elizabeth, is, am I missing anything?
Uh, yes, um, the AC units are now grounded. It's not at the code, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
The AC units will be.
Oh, that's right, that was the, based on the city's request, I believe, wasn't it?
Right.
Yeah, okay, you're correct. I stand corrected.
Anything else you'd like to add, David?
I think that's it unless, yeah, unless counsel has any questions.
Anyone else from your team, Elizabeth, that would, needs to speak?
Uh, if David Black can talk, he, he can say a few things about the parameters of property and the landscaping. I don't know if he's on.
We're looking right now. We see David Black. You, you just need to unmute. There you go, David.
David, do you want me to pull up the landscape plan on, on my screen?
David Black, we cannot hear you if you're trying to speak.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect, alright. Uh, good evening, counsel.
David, are you still there?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Would you like, would, David, would you like me to pull up your landscape plan on, on the screen that everyone's looking at?
Yes, please.
Okay, let me, let me pull that up, hang on. Uh, guys, just have to bear with me.
David, you can start making your comments while the plan's coming up, if you like.
Okay, um, just from a landscape perspective, what we've done is try and kind of soften the perimeter of the project. We're using larger trees to kind of bring down the scale of the building. Um, we have quite a few palm trees.
Alright guys, can you see it, everyone?
No, we cannot.
No.
Okay, let me get it back. What's on your screen right now?
Just, just everybody from Zoom. We have no, no visual.
Okay, let me go back to Zoom. I apologize. You can keep speaking, David.
Um, okay, and just for my plant palette, just using drought-tolerant plant material. All the plant material will be within the water districts, water use requirements for that. Let's see, around the perimeter of the buildings, we've tried to use evergreen trees, palm trees, and such like that to kind of soften the edges of the project.
Nothing yet?
No.
No, it's not yet, but.
Uh, excuse me, am I supposed to like screen share again? Because I got off of it. Do you guys?
Yes, you need a, um, the green button at the bottom that says share screen.
Okay, let me go. Oh, there we go. Thank you.
Alright, there we go. Okay. And then, see, the other portions, you know, we do have walkways connecting, you know, all the buildings. There's pathways leading to the rec center, to the pool area. So all the buildings are connected through pedestrian walkways. What else we have? The perimeter landscape will, will be maintained by there's some control by the city. Will be a city-maintained landscape on 15th and Palm. For that. And can I, I don't know if you had any other concerns, but with the landscape, but everything kind of meets the conditions for the project as far as your tree density, shading, plant type, and that kind of such.
So, does that cover everything, David?
Yes.
Okay, anyone else from your team, Elizabeth, that would like to speak?
Uh, if I could get Mitch to just talk about the setbacks, that would be awesome. Our interim mayor.
Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you, Mitch, go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you, honorable councilman, members, or sorry, honorable mayor, members of the council. Um, so I think there was a lot of discussion with the setbacks to the northerly proper line and then the eastern proper line on 15th Street. So we did an analysis and although the, the setback is 15 feet, the average setback to the north between our units and the existing units is almost 45 to 50 feet. Now, if you compare that to the Riverside County standard, normally Riverside County, you're anywhere from 10 to 15 foot setback. So the setback provided on the north line is, would normally be, you know, 20 feet building separation, and we're providing almost 50 feet building separation. Um, the setback on the, on 15th Street, we're providing the minimum provided by the zoning ordinance. Although Sky Haven has a fairly large setback on 15th, we are consistent with the, the other developments along 15th. So if you would note the development to the south, we match those setbacks. Um, so anyways, if there are any more questions on civil aspects of the project, let me know. But, uh, those are the setback issues.
Appreciate it. Elizabeth, anyone else?
Uh, that's it, unless Mr. Wolf would like the same thing, and then I'll close. I'll just be notes in my head.
Alright, um, I don't see anyone else unmuting themselves to speak. So we're going to move on to take testimony from those in a neutral position. Is there anybody coming up on Zoom that wants to be in a neutral, make a neutral comment?
Uh, no, they're not.
Is there anybody in the public that would like to make a neutral comment? Please stand. See no one? At this time, this is the opportunity to appellate to rebut anything that's been said in, in here. Um, obviously, if you rebut anything that the developer has said in opposition of the appeal, which is upholding the planning commission. Mr. Ton, Tom Taker, Toker, you are the appellant for the HOA, assigned by the HOA. Is there anything that you would like to rebut?
Ah, here we are, okay. I was going to ask Diane to do it, but I can't, I can't be the.
You were appointed the appellant, so I'm gonna have to rebut. This isn't a time to repeat yourself on anything that you've already said. This is a time to rebut any information that you heard that would be vital for us to hear on your behalf.
I, did I hear properly that there's a 40-foot setback along the north side, that the buildings are that far? I'd like to know what is in between the buildings and the property line. It doesn't look like a 40 on that map.
Again, this is your time to rebut questions and comments? This isn't a time to ask questions.
Okay. I just, you know, I, I, I seriously, seriously have a problem. Uh, and I've said it before on traffic, and I think the city either needs to extend 14th to Morongo or to extend West Street to meet up with 14th Street as an alternate. Because this is just gonna be a big problem. And I, other things, you know, I, I'm trying to think what else I, you know.
Is there any information that the applicant gave during their comments a few minutes ago that you'd want to rebut?
No, not at this point.
Thank you very much for your time. At this time, is there anyone in the audience that didn't have a chance to speak in any of those categories that would like to speak? I see nobody raising their hand on Zoom. I see no one standing forth in person. The public hearing is now closed. The city council will move to debate after a five-minute break. Thank you. Two minute call, two minute call. If I can get the city council back to the dials, city council. Ladies and gentlemen, we're back. Uh, thank you for allowing us that break. We usually take one around eight o'clock. This is obviously gone, uh, well past eight o'clock. Um, so we have closed the public hearing at this point and we're in the city council discussion. Um, I'm not sure who wants to fight over starting, but. All right, Ms. Pye.
Um, we haven't answered all of the questions, so I'd like for staff, where you put in the, uh, documentation, um, the applicant's, um, response and what staff's response was.
Thank you. Um, so the first, um, allegation is included in the staff report, um, basically says a notification package is incomplete, does not show all the properties within a three hundred foot radius of the subject property, nor does it show a type list of the property owners and their mailing addresses within the three hu- three hundred foot radius for the both property owners and residents that live continuous, excuse me, to the project. So the city response is a notification package containing a scaled map showing properties within a three hundred foot radius of the subject, subject property, a type list of the property owners and their mailing addresses within the three hundred foot radius. The three sets of type self adhesive address labels for the property owners and residents that live continues to the project property. The package was received from a certified title company. The next, um, allegation was existing site plan does not show fifty feet beyond the property boundaries. Um, this is actually shown on exhibit twenty-three on page four eleven, the conceptual grading plan. It shows fifty fi- fifty feet beyond the proposed project. Um, the next one was the proposed site plan incomplete information on application. The city response, a proposed site plan was submitted as exhibit number two in the planning commission packet and is also included as exhibit twelve. A conceptual grading plan was not submitted. The city response is the conceptual grading plan is attached as exhibit number twenty-three. Building plans, information on application, no roof plans and no information on overhang eaves, roof drains, downspouts, solar panels, et cetera. Incomplete, no screening treatments for mechanical equipment. City response is a condition has been added as condition number three and per section seventeen point zero eight point two eight zero L, mechanical and utility equipment, heating, air conditioning, or other type of equipment shall be pad mounted on the ground. No roof mounted equipment shall be permitted. The next one is the sign program. A condition is included as condition number four and five that no signage is approved and the applicant shall submit an application for all signs to, to be reviewed and approved by staff. Exterior lighting plan incomplete on application. The city responses, an exterior lighting plan was submitted as exhibit number twelve in the planning commission packet and also included in the city council packet as exhibit number twenty-two and is on page four oh eight. Site photographs incomplete on application. Si- the city response is the site photographs are included in, as part of your packet and can be found on exhibit number twenty-seven and also starts on page four nineteen. A conceptual landscape plan incomplete on application. A city response is a conceptual landscape plan was submitted as exhibit number ten in the planning commission packet and is also included as exhibit twenty. The next one is there are missing items and violations in the, in the project application. One is, um, roof mounted air conditionings, roof plans, trash container locations, mailbox, carport designs, conceptual grading and the proposed site plan. So as stated before, there has been a condition as condition number three and per section seventeen point zero eight point two eight zero that the roof equipment shall be ground mounted. Gutters and downspouts shall be concealed and this design is a continuous architectural feature as stated in section seventeen point zero eight point two eight zero J. And per section seventeen point zero eight point two seven zero K, the trash enclosures have a preferred location inside parking areas or at the end of parking bays. And, um, locations shall be conveniently accessed for trash collec- collection and maintenance. And furthermore, I have reached out to DVD and, and provided the site plan where it shows the location of the trash enclosures and they have provided a will s- serve letter and is included in your packet um, as exhibit number twenty-six, page four eighteen. The next one is the desert hot springs, um, code title seventeen zoning code violations. Um, sub- subsection A, preserve and enhance established residential neighborhoods. Subsection B allow for encourage and encourage the infill at prevailing scale and character. Subsection F, scale and intensity. The city response is the project spans over two zoning designations, the mixed use corridor and the residential high. The mixed use corridor permits by right multifamily dwellings with a maximum height of four stories and sixty feet. The residential high density designation permits by right multifamily dwellings fifty-five feet in height maximum. Per section seventeen point zero eight point zero two zero, table seventeen point eight point zero, zero one, the proposed project is well within both ranges. Perimeter building in both zones are proposed by the applicant as only two stories, twenty-five feet, nine inches. This is an entire thirty feet under the maximum allowed. And per se- per section seventeen point zero eight point two nine zero D, a differing or contrasting architectural style may be appropriate if it enhances the visual en- environment and establish a desirable precedent for future development. The next one is multifamily and infill in single family neighborhood. The city response is a fully dimensioned site plan indicating all setbacks was submitted as exhibit number two in the planning commission packet and is also included as exhibit twelve. A conceptual landscape plan was submitted in exhibit number ten in the planning commission packet and is also included in the city council packet. The next one is the multifamily architecture subsection I, mechanical and utility equipment. As stated before, a condition has been added as condition number three and they shall be ground mounted. The next one, multifamily architecture regarding the gutters, downspouts and roof vents. Um, per section seventeen point zero eight point two eight zero J, gutters and downspouts shall be concealed unless designed as a continuous architectural feature. Roof men- roof vents shall be colored to match roofing materials on the buildings. The next one is multifamily site planning. Subsection one, open sa- open space areas and recreational amenities, item one. City response, per section seventeen point one four point zero five zero residential development. B, open space design criteria. Common and op- common and private open spaces provided for projects with five or more units shall incorporate the following design. Up to twenty-five percent of the total open space requirement may be met by counting any private exterior open space areas. A table has been provided and is included in the packet. The next one is multifamily site planning, um, subsection M, mailboxes located close to entry giving careful consideration to staking on interior drives. City response is the mailboxes will be located and pre-approved by the U.S. Postal Service prior to installation per section seventeen point zero eight point two seven zero. The last one is, um, carports and accessory structures. City response, a condition has been added as condition number fourteen that all development on the project site shall be in compliance with all applicable codes as well as applicable provisions of the adopted building and fire codes. Thank you.
That's all you have? Mr. Nunez, you want me to move towards you or down the other end? Mr. Gardner?
I don't have any questions directly for staff. I do have a fair number of comments. Were you holding that?
This is the proper, proper time.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, thank you to everybody who has participated and provided input, um, tonight. It's a, it's a lot. And, uh, that being said, um, I've noticed and made in, in several pages of notes here of comments that were made that I think need to be, you know, uh, addressed and need to be somewhat responded to. Um, the, uh, the notion that, uh, that this is a, a, a big increase from what was previously approved, three hundred and ninety to four hundred and nine is nineteen units is a minimal change. Um, the two thousand seventeen traffic study, I think, is quite valid. Uh, it, it, the traffic has not increased because of the pandemic and, you know, I've read all of the opposition letters and comments. I've listened to everybody here tonight. I've read the entire packet. Uh, I watched the planning commission meetings back in October when this was put forth. Um, I, 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 it's, it's an awful lot of information to go through. It's not an easy decision, I think, for any of us up here, but, um, this, uh, this project, I think, will really help with our arena numbers. I think we need condos in the city. Uh, and other smaller houses, there are none right now. Uh, it does fit our zoning. Uh, it, uh, it's already a previously entitled project. Uh, I don't see a way where we can really, you know, legally deny it. Uh, architecturally, I think it's stunning. Uh, I think staff has added all of the right, uh, conditions of approval that, uh, that meet things. Uh, the balconies don't even face the, uh, the previous, uh, the, 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 the Sky's Haven site. Uh, the two story ones all are along there. The three story ones are in the middle, so I don't see three story people peering down at them. And there's a, there's a hotel directly across the street that's four stories high. I recognize that this is a major change for the neighborhood. It's a major change for the city. But the city is changing. And when Sky's Haven and the other mobile home parks were built, it was much more like Desert Edge. We're no longer Desert Edge. We've grown and we're continuing to grow and we have to reflect that. Um, and this project, it does do that, and I think we need this project. Um, I do believe that there has been plenty of time for everybody involved to address any of their concerns and have them mentioned. Was mentioned that the zoning was done in somehow seraphically and in the middle of the night and without public input. It was a two-year process and there were countless public meetings to address the zoning changes on this as we updated our zoning map over the last two years. So I, 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 there, there, there has been, I think, th- this project itself has been going on since October of last year. So, um, I think all, there, there's been plenty of time for everybody to review things, everybody to get their input put in and to, uh, to go forward with this. Um, and then lastly, uh, I'm, 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 uh, sympathetic to the changes and the people that, uh, that are opposing this. But, uh, I don't think it'll be nearly as bad as they're projecting. Um, and I think that, uh, moving forward with this is the right thing to do and uh, uh, I, I, one last point, you know, um, there's been a lot of NIMBYism going on with this project. In fact, with anything that seems to come around this area and the, uh, residents of the park opposed the grocery outlet, opposed the library. And like I said, this is no longer Desert Edge. This is no longer the middle of nowhere. The city is growing and we need to keep growing. And I know that it's, change is sometimes scary. I don't see the change coming with this as being that detrimental. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Betts. Did you wanna go first? Mr. Nunez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first of all, I want to say, uh, thank you for the residents of Sky Haven and, and Vista Montaña. I, I really wish we had a lot more residents that would voice, you know, come out to these, uh, public hearings and, um, show their, their concerns or their, their, um, their side if they, they approve a project. Um, I wish, uh, we can get to that point where we have, uh, community engagement, uh, like this. Uh, that being said, I, I see, um, a lot of positive things with this project. And a lot of the questions that I had got answered tonight, uh, with one, the balconies. I was gonna see if we can put trees that would help block the visibility from the two, two sites and that got addressed. Uh, the buildings were wide, wide, really well designed. I like the architecture that they have going. Um, one thing I, I One thing I want to see more is housing for our young professionals and our families. If there's starter homes, condominiums, whatnot. On the other side, I see where we will have a lot of issues. And I do agree traffic is going to be one of them. The open space, I got a chance to review. What I see is open space and it meets minimum. I would like to see more. I am truly a firm believer of walkable communities, healthy, you know, health and wellness. So I would like this project to reflect that, especially if we're having 16, over 1,600 residents in this project. Traffic, I'll go back to traffic. When we see coming in and out of this project, it's going to be a mess. And I do kind of agree with that. That's why I would ask if maybe the applicant would consider extending all the way, the 15th Avenue, all the way to West and moving up. Because these residents are going to have children and these children are going to either use Two Bunch Palms Elementary or Bubbling Wells. And either direction that they go in the mornings and the afternoon when they're getting off is going to be really congested. If they are going to Two Bunch Palms, they're going to be walking in the middle of the desert because the parents are not going to be getting up and driving them to school when they can just walk to school. And that's my concern. I would be highly favorable of moving forward with this project if we can get some kind of agreement to say, it's like, you know what, West would be better served for these residents to be developed. Or maybe some funds put into that to help with those efforts. But those are my output for this slide. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Betts.
So this items moved from the planning commission to the city council under appeal by the residents of Sky Haven's residential community. And as I understand, the position of Sky Haven's community, this project application is deficient on several points. The applicant submitted for, the application submitted for the projects incomplete. The project as designed contains notable life, health, and safety concerns. As the developer pointed out, I'll get to that in a minute. The project is, as designed, contains violations of our municipal code. And the project will significantly degrade the quality of life of Sky Haven's residents and residents of other nearby residential communities, Vista Montana and others. So our job here as council members in this hearing, this appeal, is to determine if those points raised by the Sky Haven community are correct and outweigh the developer's interest to go ahead with the project as it's been submitted. We just had the developer confirm the balconies do face Sky Haven. And they said, well, we'd be willing to change those. Well, they haven't changed them yet. So if somebody here is going to approve this project, it's not just to say deny the appeal, you're going to have to deny the appeal and say, we accept the developer's concession that the balconies are going to be removed and not overlook Sky Haven. We can't just sit here and say, well, this appeal is okay, we're denying the appeal and then everything goes forward if you have these specific concerns that you're raising. Now, our options are to deny the appeal, to uphold the appeal and deny the project, or ask that this go back to the planning commission to address concerns raised here by council members that I'm hearing now and by a very learned and bright presentation on many different points by the people who filed the appeal, Skies Haven. And I followed this project through the public hearing. I watched the most recent planning commissions in their entirety. I saw them twice. I wanted to really fully absorb what took place there. And I was also involved in the review of this project on April 19th, 2011, when it came before this council and was denied unanimously. And that's by the council at that time. In 2011, April 19th, 2011, this project was denied. Now, three of us sitting here were on that council. Councilwoman Pye and then Councilmember Mattis, now mayor. And what happened at that meeting was Councilmember Baker moved to deny, Councilwoman Pye seconded, and we voted unanimously to deny it. And we had a meeting that was almost exactly like this one because the planning commission had sent it to us and they had, they had approved it. Now, I'll be happy to hear from any of my council members what has changed since that time that would cause them to think now this one's okay, but previously it wasn't. And I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot. I genuinely like to hear that. But in 2000, it was determined to be way too dense. And today, as it's proposed, it's more dense. It was a seniors-only complex then. Now it's proposed as a general population complex. It will be more active and have more traffic impacts. Back then, there was very significant community interest. None of it favored the project. Some notable residents came against the project. One said, Tom Heil said, he's normally pro-growth, but he was against this project. And other local realtors like Tom Radek and Brophy also spoke against it, as did many residents. That's all on the public record. You can go review that. And now Sky Haven has brought this appeal to us and expressed their concerns. And I really want to compliment Sky Haven's community and its members for making a very thoughtful, calm, detailed presentation in what is obviously an issue of very significant concern to them, which they have researched unlike anything I have ever seen any members of a community research and bring forward to this council, all on points that were expert. Expert testimony was brought here by residents of a community. Now, and that goes for the, you know, the comments of the other communities that spoke are appreciated also. They point out expertly many failings of this project's design, including significant life, health, and safety concerns. There's no sidewalks for kids to walk inside the development. Now, the developer, when he was on, was talking about how they have walkways that go through this project. But if you look at those rockways, every one of them crosses a street. Now, if I'm sitting on a planning commission and I'm concerned about children walking through a development and they're coming from way over on one end over to another little park, I'm going to wonder how those kids are going to get there safely. And we've all seen developments like this. There's a, there's a walkway that is actually separate from traffic lanes. But this project is so dense, it can't possibly be separate from traffic lanes. Now, I visited in the morning, somebody's going to work, they're late, they're hurrying, God, I got to beat this traffic, getting out of this place. Kids going to play in the play yard or whatever they're doing. They go run out between these buildings, out into this cross the street. And if you count them, there's one, two, three, four, five, you could put the drawing up and see it. This is not a kid-friendly development. This is a very dense development. And if some kid doesn't get killed, a run over, or hit, or service injured, it's hard to believe that that's not going to happen. Now, Sky Haven also pointed out that there's exceptions to the planning code, which were not specifically noted at the planning commission. And the way that process works is if the planning commission is going to say, hi, we recognize this doesn't meet code, they need to make specific findings in that meeting. But that didn't happen. Anyhow, and the impacts to the enjoyment of the property, the property owners nearby, Skies Haven and Vista Montana and others, is all outweighed in favor of just the developer's interest to build this. That's not what we're here to do. We're here to weigh everything. And this is all 100% skewed towards the developer's interest. Now, this community, Skies Haven, raised $1,400 to file an appeal to the planning commission decision. That's a lot of money. I'd examine why we have such a high appeal fee, but anyhow, that's another day. It's no small amount of money and it shows how seriously they view the deficiencies in this project. It's clear they're not only objecting to losing their views and they stated clearly they don't want vacant land near them. We all know the problem that vacant land is causing for these projects and these, for our, you know, community. When you've got people camping out in these vacant land, they've had those significant problems there. They were happy to have this development come in, just not this one. They want a good one. So that's clearly not at the heart of their objection. Their testimony shows that. Had they come to us on appeal only talking about not wanting to lose their views or not wanting anything built there, you know, we don't want anything in our backyard, nimbyism, well, I would be the first one to say, you know, sorry, that doesn't cut it with me. There's not nimbyism. It's, I don't want that in my backyard, not I don't want anything in my backyard. And the whole process of going through this process at the planning commission is to sit there and go through, have the give and take, and try and get something to work out better. And we've seen in this community where somebody has proposed something, residents mobilize, get smart, study, and come and present the other side of the argument, projects get changed, and it ends up being that much better. Sunset Springs, the development where I live, when Coachella Valley Housing Coalition originally came in there, they proposed some homes that were pretty bland and pretty plain. And everybody in that community spoke up and pushed really hard. And if you drive down through that development now, you're going to see something that looks really, really nice. And everybody's proud of it. And every resident there says, wow, we did just like they did. We worked really hard. We presented ourselves and we got some change at the planning commission level. That didn't happen at the planning commission. They came and made a great presentation to the planning commission. The planning commission said, okay, thank you very much for coming and voted yes. They didn't examine one issue. Worse than that, the chair told commissioners who wanted to examine some of these issues and hashed this stuff out at the planning commission, but sorry, you're not allowed to talk about that. It's not permitted to be talked about. And you can go watch the tape, you can see it. People wanted to bring up the traffic study. Now, I got my own concerns with this project, just as a resident of this town. And the traffic study claim presented for this hearing is totally contrary to anything else that any expert planners or studies you will find purport. Now, what they're saying is that the age-restricted 55-plus senior development will create more trip traffic than a project for the general population. Now, I happen to talk to some engineers around the country and up in Irvine, and the international traffic engineers, trip generation manual shows the following as a baseline. Senior 55 active apartments, 4.27 daily vehicle trips as a baseline. And then the standard family apartment three-story, 5.44 average daily trips per baseline. In other words, the new proposed project is going to increase the traffic, not decrease it. Now, I'm talking to an engineer from Irvine, I forget the name of the company, I got it on my other notes. And he says, well, that's just the baseline. And then from there, we go and do other studies. But I also checked with engineers at Southern California Association of Governments in the traffic modeling department and said, well, what's your impression? He says, senior apartment complex will generate less average vehicle trips per day, significantly less. And it was that way with everybody that I called and every study that I looked at online. So where a traffic engineer comes up, contrary to every other professional that does traffic studies for a living, engineering firms that do that for a living, on behalf of developers, and they're all agreed that this project will have significantly more impacts, up to a third more. So already the problem that we have identified as a traffic problem, everybody recognizes 15 is going to be a traffic problem, is exaggerated by this project and the environmental study did not take that into account. Just talk about the, you know, the architect got on there and he showed the air conditioners on the roof. And it was the residents of Sky Haven that pointed out that the air conditioners on the roof is the wrong place to be because our code doesn't allow it. And so, so, okay, well, great, we'll put them on the ground. But there was no, that's where they're supposed to be. It's supposed to be a gang on the ground. But if you go look at these buildings, there's no room in the site plan, it's so tight, there's nowhere to put these air conditioners. Now, if I'm on the planning commission, I'm going to say, and I guess if I'm here now because we're acting as the planning commission, we're supposed to be looking at these details, where are you going to put the air conditioning? It's okay to say you're going to put them on the ground, but where are you going to put them? I'm actually of the opinion that this thing is so tight and the noise from a gang of 12 air conditioners on one building, and there's 48 buildings, is going to be so offensive to Skies Haven that it'd be better to put them on the roof so that the residents, those buildings can deal with that vibration and that noise rather than their neighbors, since they're getting the benefit of the air conditioning. So if I was at the planning commission, I might have said, you know, I understand that our code says that the conditioner, air conditioners are supposed to be on the roof, but I want to put, I mean, they're supposed to be on the ground, but I'm going to put them on the roof because I don't want the huge impacts that they're going to cause. And so I want to do a finding in my motion to approve this project that air conditioners will be put on the roof. We didn't do that. We're not thinking this thing through. Can we pull up the elevations on the screen? I think it was page five, the three-story buildings. Elevations were put up. That, no, 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 keep going. The one that showed, there, there you go. Okay, so here you got the two and three-story buildings. And it says, if you look at the measurements, 25.9, and you look, it's almost a perfect square. And what they're representing in this drawing is that the buildings are 25.9 inches apart. But if you go look on the site plan, can we go to the site plan now? They're actually seven to 10 feet apart because there's a scale, there's a scaled drawing. I've got it here. I pulled it out. You know, it goes, shows all the measurements. And I took the time to have people who know how to read these things tell me how many feet there are. And between the three-story buildings, you have seven to 10 feet. There's nowhere that you're going to, that represent, those elevations are deceptive. There's nowhere that has that kind of distance. There's no 25 feet between any of these buildings, anywhere, except maybe the driveline. So, you know, there, I'm sitting there and I've got somebody coming up to me and I'm saying, you know. And then here you can see, if you wanted to look about the walkway, somebody way over here on the right end, kids got to come along. And now they got to cross the street, 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 cross the street to get to the rec center. That's not the way these things are supposed to be designed. It's really packed. You got hammerheads. Does anybody know what a hammerhead is? A hammerhead is where you pull the car in and there's a trash dumpster. And that little square box you see at the dead-end roads, that's a dumpster, that's a trash dumpster. And what that's a hammerhead is where somebody who's in that last parking lane can back up and easily get out of their space. And it's just so you can back out and be able to turn and go. But rather than have that, what they said is, you know, this place is so tight, we don't know where to put these trash dumpsters, let's just put them in the hammerhead. So now what happens is the trash truck is going to come along 18 times and they're going to come in the entrance and they're going to pull down this lane. Now, you want to get out to work, you go out of your house, you walk down to the car and you say, oh dang, the trash truck's in the way of my car, I'm going to have to wait till they finish. And then I'm going to have to wait till the trash truck backs up. The trash truck's going to back up, beep, 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 beep. And DVD will have two men on that truck and one will be there directing and making sure no kid gets run over. But that's not what our planning code says. Our planning code says this is to be avoided, not excused. And so you've got residents just looking at it, even if the code does allow it, you're looking at residents going, look, we're creating this nightmare. 18 times on trash day, this truck is backing up and they're blocking residents from being able to get to the vehicle. And for the people I know who have studied the planning code and helped me on this, studied for this one, that's a violation of our planning code. There's no talk about requiring a traffic light out here on 15th Avenue in Palm. I didn't see that come up anywhere as a condition. You've got a half-street servicing, so many different cars that are coming in and out of there. And the traffic count, by the way, was 2,559 trips per day with 164 at peak hour and 201 at PM peak hour. And what they're saying is that the senior apartments, we're actually going to create more peak hour traffic jams. I don't know if anybody here up here are senior, but, you know, once in a while I have a doctor's appointment where I have to, it's in the morning and I'm driving down the road and I'm in rush hour. Like, oh, I remember what this is like. This is, you know, I'm going to have to fight all this traffic. I haven't done this in a long time. I don't do this anymore. I'm retired. But, so generally you plan your appointment, say, I'll go after the rush hour. Seniors don't go seeking out rush hour for their trips. They don't add to rush hour traffic. And again, the international traffic engineers guidelines confirm that. So whoever this traffic study engineer was that came up with this, that said that the vehicle trips are more with a senior project, shouldn't have his license. I'm almost done. You know, compared to other city developments, you go look at other developments, there's one in San Pedro going in that is 212 units on 60 acres. I mean, if this project had come through and they had proposed, you know, in the center, 18-story buildings and some open space, it would be better than what we've got now. These are stacked in here like cordwood. So, and then, and we have new docs being introduced today. And the, the applicant made note that we got these, they're important of us to take note that we got these, that, that, you know, it's important enough to point it out in their presentation, hey, we got you the environmentalists, we got you environmentalists. But if they're important enough that the developer themselves says these are important documents, they're also important enough for the public to be able to review these and weigh these, because the developer himself has presented to us that we did all the environmental, everything's fine, so you can just believe me, on something that none of us have even read. Now, how does that work in a public hearing process when the people who have paid for this appeal haven't had this? Now, we can sit there and say, oh, well, it's really not that important. But remember, the developer said, this is an important document. Have they even gotten it yet? I'm probably guessing they haven't. Now, there's one other thing here, and I've been curious about this, because it's on the map, and they're talking about concessions that they've requested. And if you look at it on this, we've all seen this, you can probably see it on, it's similar to that drawing there. It's this one here, I forget what they call it, it's the vicinity map, something like that. But it says right here, concessions requested, city concessions requested. They want 150-square-foot minimum private open space reduction. And they want a 25% usable open space reduction. So did the planning commission approve that? Did the planning commission say, okay, we're gonna reduce the open space in this, as is drawn on this plan? You know, I don't know if the pla, I don't think the planning commission even noticed it or took it up. There was no, there was no comment with the planning commission, says, hi, well, geez, you guys wanna reduce the open space? You know, I really don't like that idea. But here it is, right here in the developer's documents, they're requesting it. So I guess the question is, council, is if we're gonna go ahead and uphold the planning decision, you've got a question to make. Are you going to agree to 150-foot square-foot minimum private open space reduction and a 25% usable open space reduction? If you're gonna do that, then put it in your motion to approve this. Talk about marina numbers. This project was approved with a requirement to offer 15% of the units as affordable housing. And in return, the city granted a 13.7% residential density bonus. But later, the requirement to have the 15% affordable housing was determined not to be legal, so it was removed. But they still get to keep the 13% residential density bonus. In other words, they get to make it more dense than was otherwise permitted in the original plans. And that comes courtesy of Ron Gilbert and Ron's Log, who took philosopher's notes the last time this came up. So, of course, this is gonna help us meet our arena numbers, because every, just about everything that's built in the city helps us meet arena numbers. But what's the sell price on these? There's been nothing here to justify that these are gonna satisfy, these could go for way over, we don't know what the sell price is, we're just guessing. We didn't have any statement from them, there's nothing in this record that indicates this is gonna help us meet our reading numbers, because we don't know the sell price of these units. If the sell price is too high, it doesn't meet the arena numbers. If these are executive, what they used to call them, yuppie condos, going for a really high price, because everybody is gonna love to live here, um, they're not gonna meet the arena numbers. They're not gonna satisfy our reading goals, maybe at the upper end, but not down to the low end, if that's what people are thinking. So, there's too much here, this council's being asked, again, to ask as a planning commission, when that's not our job. Our job is to take a 30,000-foot view, and it's the planning commission's job to take the, get down to the weeds and dig into these details and look at things. You know, the staff has presented that everything was complete, but the grading plan is not complete, because it doesn't show the downspout and drainage plant, it's not included on there. You know, I got friends who've been in this business for 35 years, I ask them to look at the, the plans, they look at them, they know what they're looking at instantly, and, and they point out the plans are incomplete. And they are, and the, the applicants are correct, I mean, the appellants, the people who filed the appeal of Sky Haven are correct. The, this grading plan is incomplete, this is the detailed one, okay, that's incomplete. So now, are we gonna examine that here? So I, I may have some other comments. I don't wanna go on too much longer, it's been a long night, I appreciate the council's patience, I've tried to be as nice as I can. I don't wanna ruffle anybody's feathers, I'm just, I'm just really exasperated that you have an excellent, brilliant presentation made, and I would thought, man, this is a slam dunk. Nobody in their right mind is gonna refute this very studied, intelligent, college-level, professional-level detail that they've gotten into, and I guess they do have some professionals who've been in this business, know what they're talking about. My preference would be to send this back to the planning commission, and if I can find my notes, because I've been all over the board here, I'm getting all excited here, sorry, I'll find them, give me a minute here, because this is important. Where'd they go, did you see where I put them, Scott?
You're watching.
Okay, so my request, and I won't make a motion, because I don't wanna muck things up, but be to send this back to the planning commission, and in so doing, with instructions to review in proper detail, allowing all commissioner inquiries on project design and specifications to be made, and not cut off and told that they were out of order, and to make specific findings codified in a motion where planning commission approval deviates from municipal code or city guidelines, and to specifically look at 17.04.020 as part of their deliberations. This needs to go back to the planning commission, that's the right choice. I would deny this one outright, but everybody needs a chance to work it out. You've had a developer say, okay, we'll move the balconies, take that back where it properly belongs. Otherwise, we need to start hashing it out here on those details, and I will hold my comments beyond this point. Thank you. Three hours and five minutes ago, we started. Obviously, there's some passion here. I, first of all, wanna thank all the residents that came out tonight via Zoom. I wanna thank the developer for, for wanting to bring a project to our community. There's obviously passion on both sides, I see it. We as a city council are tasked when we are elected, and we go to those classes, and we're, we're taught that we're supposed to come up here and be a neutral, we're supposed to come up here in a neutral position and listen to the debate of the reason why an appeal, why a, um, someone has a problem with a project, and try to compromise with it, and/or make a decision based on that information, then. Obviously, some people come into the meeting and already have their mind made up. So, there's a whole bunch of people out there, are you gonna interrupt me, because I didn't interrupt you? We had this whole thing about not interrupt each other anymore? Thanks. So, you know, when we make a decision based on this, there's a couple of things that we have to look at and, and, and try to decipher through. And I apologize if my voice is getting slow, and I'm, I'm out there, because it's way past my bedtime, but, we can't, first of all, you can't make a judgment on a project based on what you think will live there, that's discrimination, and that's against the law, first of all. So I know the passion in some of the people that came up and spoke tonight, they have a passion about who's going to live next to them, and, and that could cause what they believe to be traffic, crime, not the people that live in that neighborhood, those types of things, that has to be thrown out. So we can't make a decision on that, I mean, you can, but you shouldn't. Two, um, there's a lot of information that keeps getting thrown out, and bits and pieces, and, and things that just aren't true. One, I don't mean to point you out, Mr. Betts, but you said there's no stoplight there, there's already a stoplight at 15th and Palm. It's Camino, Campesino, Campanero, right? So there's a stoplight already there. So that helps with the traffic, I understand the concerns about the traffic. But again, if it goes back to, we don't want that type of traffic, is it a discrimination on who's living there? And that, that kinda muddies the water for me, so I, I don't know if the proper comments tonight about traffic studies, going back and forth between whomever is the proper thing to be talking about tonight. We've had professionals give us opinions on both sides, we have to take that into consideration from the professional standpoint, not from a layperson's standpoint. I can't make that decision, all I know is what's in the report, and what's been said at the meetings. And we've had a traffic person on one side say one thing, and the traffic study for the developer on one side. So I do agree that I don't think the traffic's gonna change much. Most families in our area that would, and, and again, this isn't be a condo project to me. If it's a condo project, it's more of a, it's a, it's a, it's not a family, family project, it's not apartments, it's, it's, most condo projects are sold as homes. So, you know, it, it, it's how you kind of describe it when you're passionate and you want to make other people believe what you're saying. Fast forward, I, this project, I announced this project on my first day of the city five years ago. This project was a, was a, the project was denied back in 2011 for other reasons, before it was revamped and, and into what it is today. The ACs were addressed, there was compromise already made there. The balconies tonight was addressed by the developer saying, yeah, we only had about three balconies in all those units along that edge, we'll make sure those aren't built, and overseen, we get that. Trees and landscaping was addressed, that they were gonna to do that. Setbacks were addressed, I think the 40- and 50-foot setbacks we're talking about in between buildings, not the, the north side, so I think you're more correct, the Sky Haven side is gonna be about 15 feet there. Let's see, quality of life, you know, a, we're stuck in a rock and a hard place with our current governor and our current state plan. We have to continue to build units. Mr. Betts, and before him, Mr. McKee, that was set up at SCAGs and California Socialists and Governments fought really hard to get our numbers from 4,000 to 5,000 down to where they're at today, about 2,500. This would be a significant impact on those numbers, 402 units, so that does weigh in also. So the question is, it comes down to, do we have enough information based on the questions that have been raised by the appellant to deny the project as they've requested? I don't think that to be true tonight. Now, is there information that the developer's heard from the appellants that they can go back and, and help with? Yes, the balcony's gonna help with, AC units have to go on the ground, and all of a sudden, now they're gonna sound like trains, I don't think that's true at all. And the Desert Valley Disposal has always been a great partner with us, and I'm sure there's something in, in agreement that they could have a two-man unit in there, where somebody pulls out the trash can and pushes it down to the end of the block, and then the trash truck goes one direction and picks up the trash. I live in a one-street gated cul-de-sac that the truck comes through, and it doesn't beep, but it turns around, but you know that truck's there no matter what, it rumbles, so you, you have to empty trash, there's nothing we can do about that. But the dramaticness of it's gonna back up and kill kids, there's just, come on. I mean, it's just a little bit out of control, we wanna make it dramatic, I guess, to paint a picture, but we, we have to look at it from a different standpoint. There's a lot of information that was put out there by the homeowners, but a lot of that, by the HOA, I'm sorry, but a lot of that was addressed in the questions that was before. And the questions were addressed by our staff, which the Jan, I'm sorry, Councilmember Pye had read into the record for the benefit of everybody to know that those questions were put forward and answered. So again, a lot of that was debunked by the questions that were put in there. This isn't a, this isn't to say that your concerns aren't valid, I get it. I, I live in a neighborhood, I bought a house, and my backyard faces a beautiful view of a, it's a desert behind me, but I know someday someone's gonna build there, I just know it, it's gonna happen, happen. I planted some hedges, because I know there's gonna be rooftops in front of me someday. Sky Haven has benefited for over 50 years, I have great views. So I know it, it's probably really tough to have to see a possible two-story project built right in your back door. So I, I get that, and I sympathize with that. But again, it comes back to, we as a city council, looking at it from both sides, walking down the middle and going, is there enough information here to deny a project? I don't think this, the planning commission sat on its hands and did nothing. I read the notes, I try not to watch the meetings, because I don't wanna be jaded in my decision-making as the appellant, so if you look at a court of law, you don't have the next judge that could be appealed to, looking at that case at that moment, until it comes to them, and that's, so I waited for this to come to us, read the notes from the planning commission, and I just don't think they sat on their hands and did nothing. I think they did hear a lot of the information, and there were some things that were, were brought forth and changed by the developer. Is it enough? No, because Sky Haven wants it to not build at all, which I get, or be just single-family, uh, single-story. So those are my comments, uh, it's been a long night. We still have probably another hour and a half, maybe two hours of agenda to go through after this motion's made on which direction it goes. But I'm not willing to kill this project over the appeal that's been brought forth today. But I do think the developer's been put on notice that to be a good developer in our city, they do need to listen to a lot of the concerns that are here today, and come up with a plan that would, uh, would help that. So I would have no problem putting into a motion, if someone wanted to craft one, something to the effect that the balconies definitely would not be on the north side, and to make sure that they work out a deal with Desert Valley Disposal on how trash pickup will, will take place, so that it at least impacts the communities in and around. I, oh, I wanna talk about your concern, which I thought was really important, is the roads. I don't know if we can really force a developer to build that, that many roads, because that's a long ways to go, but I would definitely put it into our road plan that if this, if this, when this development starts in the future with some of the money and some of the opportunities that we have going forward, that we really look at extending west, south to 15th. We have a problem with our school zones right now and traffic. Roger and I and Russell live in an area where they built two schools, and the traffic is just, the ingress egress is terrible. Schools are beautiful, ingress egress is terrible, and this is something that we do need to address. So I agree with having one major exit on the 15th into the stoplight there, and then having to go north or south does, does not help the project. And this project looked like it was put into eight different phases, so over time, that would give us enough time to plan as a city to build those roads out and get egress and ingress into that neighborhood better, which I'm, I'm hoping that, that would help the other developments too. It looks like that Sky Haven would need another emergency exit somehow through their project, so we would have to help figure that out. And then the other mobile communities to the south are, have changed from senior living to multifamily living, and that just again puts traffic, as Mr. Nunes had said, onto our schools, because they're trying to get in and around. We have more than one exit out of the city, I know there was a comment, one exit out of the city, we have, we have about six or seven exits outside to get out, out of the city, but our traffic flow gets really tough, especially during the midday, when people are coming home from work. So I would definitely support a vision, maybe a community meeting, something in that effect, that would help us plan that area for circulation. Again, I don't know if we can put it all on the developer, but at least build a plan that we're responsible as a city for that traffic flow. And that's all I got for now. You can, this, this, Mr. Betts, this is a public hearing, you're more welcome to do that.
Throw in what I would like to see in this motion, just for discussion, rather than me make one, and then all these generations. What you talked about, about the balconies be removed, as the developer said, from the buildings.
Be moved.
Removed from those buildings, they said it themselves, that they would remove the balconies.
They would move them from the north.
They would, so that they are not overlooking people's backyards.
Correct.
There's a whole lot more than I would do, but I'm gonna see what I can get out of this. That 15th Street, instead of being a half-street, would be built out as a full street with a reimbursable agreement from any developer that would come on the other side of that street later, that's normal, we've done that.
Can we ask that question before you move on from that?
That's what I was gonna ask, if we can ask.
Can we force a developer, I think Roger's, sorry, to kinda walk over there, but can we force a developer to do more than a half-street?
I could also help with that. So basically, we would have to show that there is a clear nexus of the impacts of the project in order for the city to impose a, a, the building of more infrastructure that would kind of go kind of outside the project area. We would really have to show a nexus, and I don't know how, how we would form, formulate a nexus in this development. I'd have to kind of defer to staff on that, but.
Could we, let me ask this.
You got 2,500 trip traffic today.
Well, let me ask this question, maybe this will help you, Russ. Councilmember Betts.
You can call me Russ, call me whatever you want.
It's a formal, it's a formal meeting. Could we, the city, pay the, just build the other half? Because we've talked about this before, is that we, the developers pay for that half, but why not just jump in, and the city pay for the other half of the road?
As long as, my first preference would be the people do the impact.
We can get reimbursed in the future if there's development to the south, I would assume.
Mr. Mayor, just real quick, there's, there's two options. One, usually when the city requires anything above and beyond the project, they can, they can actually install it. The city doesn't enter reimbursement agreement for anything above and beyond their project, and we do give either diff credits or future credits, whatever that would be, that's a, if the city didn't install the improvements, there's obviously no credits to the developer, that's, it's a city project.
In your motion, you would say that a full street would be developed, however, the staff figures.
What I would like to see in the motion, yes, would be that.
And what else?
The air conditioning units, despite the code, should, there's nowhere physically to put those air conditioning units. The air conditioning units, despite the code, should, there's nowhere physically to put those air conditioning units on the site plan. And a staff is represented to me that if the air conditioning units will not, can't be found to be put on the ground per code, that it'll go back to planning commission for them to figure out where those air conditioning units go. Or that they go on the roof and parapet, just like this building has. But it's better to have them on the roof than a gang of twelve air conditioners for three story building with twelve units on the ground making noise on the other side of a wall from residential neighborhood, at least up on the roof. Now, they're going to vibrate the top apartments. I mean, they're going to notice them when those things go on, but you're going to have twelve air conditioning units right across the wall from these residents. You know, they don't all go on at the same time. One goes on, one goes off, they have the compressor noise start up, it's, it's not a continuous drone.
Your point's been made.
I just.
I went on a little long?
I just disagree with you on it, so.
Okay, so, but anyhow, there's so much else on this that that needs to be changed. It just needs to go back to the planning commission, be where it worked. I I don't like to set back on Palm, but I I can't eliminate two buildings here, I'll never get you guys to go with that one. You know, there's just so much here, that's so much wrong with this project. So anyhow, if we can get a couple of those things, at least somehow, I don't know if there's something else that could be thrown in there, I'm kind of on the spot here, trying to figure out how to redesign a project on the, on the fly, which is never what you're supposed to do.
Let me try this, make a motion, going to deny the appellant's appeal to uphold, in in upholding the, no. Let me make sure I say this right. My motion is to deny the appeal reversing the planning commission's decision, but to add to the developer's agreement, is that the proper? No, the development, conditions of approval, thank you. Conditions of approval that the road on Fifteenth Avenue from the entrance to Palm Drive, be made a full street on however crafty the staff can get, whether it's a reimbursement agreement. And then a public meeting be held in the future within the next six to twelve months on ingress and egress in and around the schools and that area there to plan, to give the city council a plan for road traffic. And that the AC requirements are upheld on the ground per our code, but in a way that they're going to be shielded from noise such as barriers, small, small fences, those types of things. And the balcony, and in that motion also would be the balconies, any, any north, any, any balconies on the north side of the project not be allowed in the project.
May, if, if the motion maker would like as well to adopt the resolution with all the findings that are also in the, the resolution to uphold the planning commission's decision.
Yes. Let me get a second first, and then you can amend if you like. I got a second, Mr., or, okay, one of the, you guys want Armus over?
Go for it.
I'm going to give Mr. Nunes a second. Mr. Betts, you had comments?
I just a question on that, as a planning commission, did they make any findings? Because they really didn't discuss anything, they just, they just accepted whatever was in the staff report, and those would be the findings that they made, or these new findings that we're making here? Because I have staff say a few times that, that staff conditions have been added. Were those added after the planning commission? There were conditions, staffs referred to a few times during this public hearing, the conditions have been added. And was that planning commission that added, or is it between the planning commission and this meeting that those conditions were added?
So I would have to defer to staff on that. I believe that they, that many things were actually added at the planning commission meeting. But, but to answer your first question, this hearing is heard what's called de novo, which is as if anew. Therefore, the findings aren't the ones that necessarily are made by the planning commission, but instead the city council also needs to make findings to approve or to deny the project.
Well, I didn't know it's called de novo, I'm happy to hear that, and I'm happy to have that explanation, thank you.
I have a motion, a second, do I have more comments? Please vote. There's no hesitation on that, there we go.
Okay, motion passes with Mayor Proten Betts opposed.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. We're going to move on to the administrative calendar. Item number four is a resolution of intent for placing Desert Valley Disposal annual billings for services of residential properties on the tax, county tax roll fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Mr. Buckham? Ladies and gentlemen, you can move out to the, the area there, if you, we can hear you on the microphones, if you wanted to move out there and have discussion.
Can we have a roll call, can we present how the vote was handled? Can staff, can staff?
Was it not on the screen? Okay, Mr. Mr. Sariano will, will announce the vote again.
So the vote was four yeses with Mayor Proten Betts opposed.
All right, then do you? Item number four is just been announced, Mr. Buckham?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So before you, it's a resolution of intent to place the annual Desert Valley Disposal residential solid waste services billing on the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two property tax roll. The levy is currently estimated to be two million, five hundred fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred forty-two dollars and fifty-three cents for this fiscal year for about seven thousand, four hundred three accounts. The public hearing is to place the billings on the, on the tax roll is scheduled to be on May eighteenth. So staff recommends that the city council approve the resolution of intent, declaring intention to levy the annual billings on to the tax rolls. And we have Chris Cunningham with DVD here to answer any questions.
Do we have public comments on Zoom or in person?
No.
No.
Mr. Cunningham, I mean, you spent all night with us, I mean, did you, is there anything you'd like to add to this?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and and staff, fogging up my glasses, and residents. Yeah, since I'm here, just real quickly, just real briefly, just to give you an idea, at least there's been a reprieve and that cost of recycling now has kind of subsided. This year, the kind of change in the single family residences, about thirty-three cents. So back down to where those normal CPI adjustments are, so I just want to let you know that.
Thank you very much, thank you for spending the email list so far. I'm going to go to council member comments, anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Yeah, one quick question, I don't know if it's for, for staff or for Mr. Cunningham. We're going apparently to the average residential rate is now going to be three forty-five seventy-eight. And I was looking, and maybe I didn't see it in the eighty or so pages that this document covered, but what was last year's average residential rate? Do you know off the top of your head of this stuff?
For the, the monthly rate?
Yeah.
I, I don't have the yearly, but the monthly.
The yearly rate was three forty-five seventy-eight?
Okay, so it it'd be, so I think last year is twenty, twenty-eight forty, this year it'll be twenty-eight seventy-eight, seventy-three, sorry.
So last year was what?
Thirty-three cents.
Twenty-eight seventy-three?
Twenty-eight seventy-three.
That's three forty-four seventy-six.
So three forty-four seventy-six, so we're going up a buck and two cents. Okay, that is what I want, so the average, the, the trash, the trash bill that's going to show up on average residential building in the city is going to go up a dollar and two cents, which is negligible. Nice, thank you, that's all I've got.
Mr. Betts?
You're not going to like what I have to say, we talked about this before. So first off, I'm finding out from staff, we're not putting these on the billings, we're doing this now? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get up to speed, some, I thought I heard somebody say this is just coming, coming back to us later?
Yeah, so this is just the resolution of intent, this is declaring your intention that we want to put these on the, the tax rolls. Then we have to hold a public hearing to do, to actually put the, you know, get the public hearing, get the sides, the testimony, and then at that point, we put them on the tax.
This is what we do every year where they, they have people come in and then they go back out.
Since then, everybody's been so fashionable to put everything on the property tax rolls, that's making the property tax go sky high. And for here, for our trash collector, for our city residents, it makes it a whole lot easier for them to collect their billings, correct?
Over the tax roll?
On the tax roll versus where you aren't able to.
It is easier, yes, it is.
The negative impact is it's showing up as three hundred and some odd dollars higher on people's property taxes. And then the Mission Springs Water District piling on six hundred, and you got the school district, everybody else is piling on the property tax, and people are getting huge tax bills. And the problem is that if somebody's going to be, lose their house to a tax sale, part of what they're losing it to is the trash bill and not Prop thirteen. And so I know this is esoteric discussion, it's probably not going to go anywhere, it's too late to be raising it after that long agenda item. But somehow, we've got to figure out how to quit adding stuff on to the tax bill, but maybe this is it, I should just keep my mouth shut, so anyhow, all right.
Can I try to change your mind? Can you look at it this way?
I'm going to vote yes.
No, no, can I try to change your mind on that thought pattern, though?
Yeah.
You look at it this way, so when Desert Valley Disposal proposes this, and a lot of agencies proposing this, is the fact that they're trying to collect this type of money from residents that stop paying, which forces them to raise the bills because they're doing collections. This way, it goes on your tax roll, you pay it, even though it looks like more on your tax roll, it's not causing a bigger increase in the future because they're not having to do so many collections.
Well, you know, that's a pretty darn convincing argument, I'll go with you on that one.
Anyone else? All right, I move that we approve the resolution, or, yeah, resolution of intent.
I'm on second.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, thanks for hanging out with Chris.
Thank you, guys.
Tell Adrian I'm really sorry.
Thank you all so much, good to see everyone, thank you.
Good to see you. Item number five is the contract language changes to professional services agreement for engineering design for the Hacienda Avenue Improvement Projects. Mr. Porras, are you still awake?
Yep.
All right, thanks for.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. That is regarding the Hacienda Avenue Improvement Project. Just real quick, the project, if you remember, includes the design and construction of sidewalks, ADA driveways, new buffer bike lanes, a new parkway with landscaping, new streetlights, new ADA ramps, and new striped crosswalks along Hacienda Avenue between Foxtown and West. This project was presented to council on January nineteen, twenty twenty-one, and council approved the professional services agreement between the city and Kimley Horn Associates for the design and an amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and zero cents. Kimley Horn has now requested changes to the agreement language in section thirty-two, time of the essence. The language changes are a result of previously unforeseen delays due to restrictions for COVID-nineteen pandemic. Those included the stay at home orders, quarantine requirements, and temporary closures of businesses. The consultant now come back to add some, some language changes to protect themselves from that. Language changes include that the project schedule may be delayed by factors outside of reason or control, such as acts of God, natural disasters, epidemics, pandemics, quarantine restrictions, or adverse weather. The request, the requested changes were reviewed by our city attorney are shown in your staff report and also in a draft agreement in the exhibit. This is the only section that they are requesting changes. That concludes my staff report, glad to answer any questions.
Do we have any public comments on Zoom or in person?
No.
No.
Okay. And with that, I would, council member comments?
I just have one, this is not going to affect us financially at all, Mr. Porras?
No. Just to add to that, we, we get this request on short form contracts, we're getting this obviously on almost majority contracts now. This is specific for this consultant, they want specific language, that's all.
Mr. Gardner?
I'll move that we accept the contract language changes to the professional service agreement for the design of the Hacienda project.
And I'll second, are they going to throw in medians also, or we didn't get that?
All right, no more discussion, please vote.
That's why, you know, if Chuck was here, we'd have medians.
You know he's bored and watching.
Is he?
No, I don't know, is he really?
Motion passes unanimously.
Item six is an urgency ordinance amending section five point two eight point zero eight five sidewalk vendor general regulations of chapter five point two eight sidewalk vendors and peddlers of title five, business licenses and regulations of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code. Chief, are you still awake? You're always awake, I mean, I don't remember any time I've ever called this guy, and he hasn't been at work.
Yes, Christina Newsom will be presenting this.
Christina still here? Oh, hey.
I did, I stayed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So this is an urgency ordinance to amend our sidewalk vendor regulations, and to provide a little bit of background. The city council approved an amendment to section five point two eight point zero eight five sidewalk vendor general regulations in October of two thousand and nineteen after California passed Senate Bill nine forty-six. SB nine forty-six limited the ability of local jurisdictions, including charter cities to regulate sidewalk vending, except as outlined in the bill. Currently, section five point two eight point zero eight five of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code provides regulations for sidewalk vendors, including but not limited to hours of operation and permissible locations. Recently, the city has increased, has had increased street vending activity and noticed that such activity requires safety regulations. So the proposed ordinance provides several time, place, manner restrictions to prevent, protect the safety of pedestrians as well as street vendors. Wanted to give you a bit of a visual representation here of what the proposed amendments would include. So currently, in the green area there, that is where essentially outside of the driveway, sidewalk vendors are prohibited, or I'm sorry, permitted. And we have very few regulations, so we currently have sidewalk vendors that are very close to the driveways, signalized intersections. We have people that are near red curbs, we have multiple sidewalk vendors right next to each other, stacked up against each other outside of these, outside of these businesses along the safety corridor, just right outside the safety corridor. And so the proposed regulations would include that no sidewalk vendor can set up outside of a, one block outside of a signalized intersection in any direction, as well as prohibit them from being right up against a driveway or a curb. So I will not keep everyone with all of these additions because they were included in the staff report, but some of them that I would like to point out is that no sidewalk vendor may operate within twenty-five feet of a bike rack or a restroom, that no sidewalk vendor may operate within fifteen feet of a fire hydrant, police call box, traffic signal controller, or street light controller. No sidewalk vendor may operate within three feet of a red curb, and no sidewalk vendor may operate within one foot of the curb. So to go into the regulations regarding hours of operational, hours of operation in non-residential areas, sidewalk vending hours limitations in area zone for non-residential use will be as restrictive as any limitation on hours of operation imposed on other businesses or uses on the same street and excluding those permitted to operate twenty-four hours a day. In residential areas, roaming sidewalk vendors shall not operate within residential zones between the hours of eight PM and nine AM. And lastly, I just included the following findings, and they're directly related to objective health, safety, and welfare concerns. So the regulation of operation of sidewalk vendors near any curve is necessary to protect public safety from potential traffic collisions with pedestrians. The regulation of operation of sidewalk vendors on or along the Palm Drive corridor between Pearson Boulevard and Camino Aventura, and within one block of any direction of any signalized intersection of the Palm corridor between Pearson Boulevard and Camino Aventura is specifically for public safety purposes. So that concludes my presentation. And the second item on the agenda is the exact same item, however, it is not an urgency ordinance. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh. I was just going to make a quick announcement on this urgency ordinance. This will need to be a super majority vote for it to pass because it's an urgency, that means four out of five of us would have to vote to approve it. I'll start with Mr. Gardner.
Ah, yes, Mrs. Newsom.
I'm sorry, any public comments?
No, we did not.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Mrs. Newsom, one, one quick question on this one regarding the hours of operation for the sidewalk vendors. Does that apply to sort of the roving ice cream trucks? Because in August, at eleven-thirty at night, when one comes down my street, there are oftentimes I will run out there in my gym shorts and flip flops to get something to cool off.
That was a vision we didn't need.
Wondering if that really, I know, that's a great visual, isn't it? If that, if that still, does that apply to them, or is that just to the sidewalk vendors?
So, so depend, that would be considered a mobile food truck?
So, so it wouldn't apply?
Different regulations, yes.
And, and, and then that, my second follow up question to that is, then this also does not apply to, I know there are several food truck parks being planned in the community that could operate later than nine o'clock, and I would kind of hope would, especially in summer evenings, so that wouldn't apply to them as well, so.
Correct, so, so those regulations are outlined in title five, just not this section.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Betts? So no sidewalk vendor may operate within one foot of the curb. Can you give me some, what was the thinking on that one?
So currently, we have sidewalk vendors that are right against the curb at our major signalized intersections. And our concern is that if there was a traffic collision, that that collision could potentially strike one of either the sidewalk vendors, a pedestrian that have to go around a sidewalk vendor. And so that was the thinking behind that.
So one foot doesn't seem like very much, though.
So one foot doesn't seem like very much, though. Is it, is it a function of that there's not that much curb to provide a buffer, so it becomes one foot?
So we're asking a few things of the sidewalk vendors in the amended regulations, and one of those is that they leave enough path of travel for not only pedestrians, but those that use mobility devices. And so in order for them to have, you know, sufficient space to vend, they need to leave an appropriate clearance, and that they also need to be one foot away from the curb, which gives them, you know, a pretty limited amount of space to vend in.
On the next one, it says no sidewalk vendor may operate within one foot of a driveway approach. Now, I can see, and I've done it before, you turn too sharp, your wheels bounce off. One foot isn't enough. I would make that minimum 10 foot. If we have the latitude to change that, I would like to make a motion to approve staff recommendation and uphold the urgency, whatever it is that you said.
Excuse me.
Keep going.
And what is time to make a motion? That's the motion I'd like to make, but changing the last one to, from one foot to 10 foot on the driveway approach.
Any more comments?
Yes. What about Health and Wellness Center?
So yeah, we've provided buffers for City Hall and the fire station and the police station, but we did not include the Health and Wellness Center.
So are you asking to buffer city buildings?
Should we? Yeah.
I think we'd probably have to specify that.
Just for clarification's sake, are we asking to buffer all city-owned buildings and just keep it kind of broad from that perspective? Or Jennifer, would we need to explicitly list them?
Can we, can we label it city facilities?
Currently, if you look at, I'm sorry, it's page 1075 of the agenda packet, 15, number 15, it says no sidewalk vendor may operate within 200 feet of City Hall. So is, would you like to include maybe all city facilities, and is 200 feet sufficient? Or do you want to lower that, or?
Making a suggestion, whoever makes the motion, to make it all city facilities?
I have it.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you have any comments?
I just want to say, can I keep the mannequins?
He's referring to our full-on block party that happens on Fridays every week and a few other days on Palm and Hacienda, that takes up a whole sidewalk. It's very incredible, it's the reason that we're here today on this. Mr. Gardner?
You had brought up, Mr. Betts had brought up a suggested amendment. I, staff has given me three other ones, and I don't know if we can incorporate what.
Why don't you give it a shot?
The one I had a question on is, is Mr. Betts one of 10 feet within a driveway as opposed to other ones? How, that's not one that the staff brought forward with us. Is that something that would be of a concern at all?
They did it one foot.
So, yeah, it is a concern. I think it's reasonable. I think the reason for the limitation we put in place is that we're already asking for so many variations of clearance, and so from any crosswalk, we're already asking for 30 feet back, and then we're asking one foot back from the curb, enough clearance for pedestrian, and then another foot away from the driveway. So we're just trying to, you know, allow for, you know, appropriate space for the vendors, and then also 200 feet between each vendor.
So what you're saying is that we could make it 10 feet?
We could, yes.
Okay. And then, you know, the only other concern I would have with any of this one, and then one that, that council member Pi suggested is, if we make this ordinance too restrictive, and believe me, I want to make it as restrictive as we possibly can, we, when we adopted this to begin with, I didn't envision what was going to happen now, and we really do need to put some teeth in this, but if we make it so restrictive that there technically isn't any place for them to operate, then it will be thrown out in court. So would any of these, in your mind, do that? Would we still have places available for them to go?
Yes, absolutely. And staff has actually tried to scout areas that would be appropriate and permissible for them to operate in, and so we plan to, if this is passed, that we will send staff out and, you know, obviously hand out the new amended regulations and also provide them with some more permissible locations.
Okay. And then, Ms. Pi, you would, how many feet would you say from a city facility were you talking about, the two of you?
The current one said 200 from City Hall, so I think she was just adding, take City Hall out and put city facility.
Put all city facilities. Okay, thank you.
If I may really quickly, I just, I want to make sure that we clarify this, totally hearing loud and clear about the city facilities, but I want to make sure everyone is aware. That will then remove sidewalk vendors from all of the parks essentially where a city facility is located. So that would be the Lozano Centers and Guide to Desco Park, so 200 feet from there, that would be excluded, same with Wardman Park. So I just want to make sure that everybody's aware, if we list it that way, that that will be excluding that.
I don't think we have a terrible problem in our parks, and food vendors aren't allowed in our parks, so.
They're not, or like, they're not allowed in the parks.
It would just keep someone from having a swap meet in one of our parks, so I think it's fair.
Perfect.
Well, if you'd like, I'll go with these staff ones.
Please, please as quick as possible.
So let's make, make a motion to adopt.
Mayor, I'm sorry if I may, we got to make sure Gary gets his ice cream. So Jennifer, Jennifer, our eagle-eyed attorney has, has a suggestion here, because there is something we need to go over.
Yes, when, when you had mentioned that, you know, hey, can you still get your ice cream at 11 o'clock PM from a roam, what we call roaming street vendor as opposed to stationary street vendor? We actually have a regulation in here on page 1076. It's F2, and it does say roaming sidewalk vendor shall not operate within residential zones between the hours of 8:00 PM and 9:00 AM, so that would include that.
But does that include the food trucks? Because according to.
No, but I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the.
No, I'm talking about the van that goes down with the, with the little bell.
The truck, not the guy pushing the car.
Okay, then I misunderstood. Thank you very much.
All right, try to craft it.
You don't want to deprive me of ice cream late at night on a summer night, trust me. All right, then I'll make a motion that we adopt an urgency ordinance amending section 5.28.085 Sidewalk Vendor General Regulations as presented by staff with the following four amendments. Sidewalk vendors must at all times maintain a clearance of not less than 36 inches on all sidewalks so as to enable persons to freely pass while walking, running, or using mobility-assisted devices. All food and merchandise shall be stored either inside or affixed to the vending cart or carried by the sidewalk vendor. Vending carts, that's two. Three, vending carts shall not touch, lean against, or be affixed at any time to any building or structure, including but not limited to poles, signs, trees, lampposts, parking meters, mailboxes, traffic signals, fire hydrants, benches, bus shelters, newsstands, trash cans, or traffic barriers, or other objects on public property or in the public right-of-way. And that we.
Your guys' mic are on.
We prohibit, we prohibit sidewalk vendors from operating, we, we remove City Hall and replace it with city facilities, so they would not be able to operate within 200 feet of any city facility instead of just City Hall, and that we add 10 feet, we change from two feet, or one foot, one foot to 10 feet.
Correct.
From a driveway.
Do I have a second? Well, can I get the second first on that, and then you can, if you need to add something to it? Okay, so I got a motion, a second. What do you need?
Just a quick question, can we restrict them from using businesses' parking lots? Is their parking lot?
That's already in it.
Oh, it is?
It is, that's considered private property.
Okay, good.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, may I interrupt one more time? I'm sorry, I know it's been a long, long evening. When we had discussed this yesterday with, with staff, I did realize that there are two areas which actually need to be harmonized. That is G on page 1076 and J2, and the correction would literally be, it would say on J2, on sidewalks, take out directly adjacent to or within residential areas. So therefore, it actually reads consistently with G. So two would say on sidewalks, within, excuse me, within residential areas.
And I would accept that as a friend, as an addition to my motion.
Thank you.
Second, good with that? All right, please vote.
This is an adoption of an urgency ordinance of the city council, the city of Desert Hot Springs, amending section 5.28.085 Sidewalk Vendor General Regulations of Chapter 5.28 Sidewalk Vendors and Peddlers of Title V Business Licenses and Regulations of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code as amended. As an urgency ordinance, this shall take effect immediately.
So that means Christina's going out to work tomorrow morning, right?
For this to take effect, we have to go to item number seven, correct?
Yes, and for item number seven, since she said it's the same thing, I make a motion that we mirror number six.
Second.
We need to put language in there to say we're going to find localized location for vendors?
Or do you guys got enough direction from us to do that?
What was that? I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
My understanding is that we're going to find a location for them to, to do this centralized, correct? So do we, does the ordinance have language in there reflecting that?
You stated that you guys were going to give them an option of a place to go, so they had options so that we couldn't be challenged.
There's lots of places they can go.
Okay, no, I'm getting a yes, I'm getting, I'm getting a yes and a no all at the same time.
We did not designate a specific one area, but what we can do is show them the areas that they are permitted to go.
Right.
Right, so basically, we're going to let them know, hey, these are the locations you can go.
Yes.
And does that language reflect in the ordinance? Because I didn't see it.
No.
No, it's not in the ordinance.
It's not in the ordinance.
But you have to provide that, or we'd be challenged by law.
What the law states is that.
Can you just, why don't you add it to your motion, because no one seems to be able to answer my question, so it seemed pretty simple, so.
Staff provides a map showing where they can go.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, so.
There's a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. There's a motion? Can somebody press, whoever bring the motion, make a second? Please vote. All right. Item number eight is an ordinance, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm waiting for votes, Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
You need to read it?
Yes. This is an ordinance of the city council, the city of Desert Hot Springs, amending section 5.28.085 Sidewalk Vendor General Regulations of Chapter 5.28 Sidewalk Vendors and Peddlers of Title V Business Licenses and Regulations of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code as amended, and the ordinance will return on May 18th for second reading and adoption.
Thank you. Item number eight is an ordinance amending section 5.04.250 Revocation or Suspension of License of Chapter 5.04 General Business Licenses of Title V Business Licenses and Regulations of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code. Who's taking this one?
It'll be Christina.
Me as well. Thank you. Staff is recommending an amendment to section 5.04.250 Revocation or Suspension of License of Chapter 5.04 General Business License of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code. This amendment will include stating the grounds or basis for the revocation or suspension of a business license. The proposed ordinance will update section 5.04.250 to include the city manager or designee must first make one or more of the following findings. One, the license violated the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code or other law. Two, the licensee violated the conditions of the license. Three, the licensee made false statements to the city. Four, the licensee's building for the business does not meet building standard codes. Or five, the business is a public nuisance. If the city manager or designee makes one or several of the findings, then the city may initiate administrative proceedings to revoke, modify, or suspend the license. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Do you have any public comments?
No, we did not.
I have comments from Diaz. Mr. Betts didn't need to step out for the restroom. He didn't mention he had any comments, so.
I don't have any comments, but I'll make a motion, or we need to wait for him to come back.
No, go ahead. I don't think, if he had any comments, he would have told me.
Make it a motion that we approve an ordinance amending section 5.04.250 Revocation or Suspension of License. I'll second.
There's a motion, a second. Press the second button there. And no other comments, please vote. He's not here, so put him as an exemption for right now. Go ahead.
Motion passes with an extension by Mayor Pro Tem Betts.
And last item on the agenda is item number nine, city council meeting scheduled for summer/winter 2001. Mr. Serrano, um, yes, Mr. Serrano?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. So we bring forward to the city council every year, propose cancellation of meetings during the summer and winter recesses, business typically slows down during that time of year, and then also to accommodate vacation schedules for council as well as staff. So staff proposes that the council go dark on July 20th, the entire month of August, and then fast forward to December, the second meeting in December, which is December 21st, and then the first meeting in January 2022. That concludes my staff report.
Do we have public comments?
No.
All right. Move the council comments?
I do.
Go ahead.
Wanted to see if we can use those days that we go dark during the summer to use for either study sessions or any kind of workshops that we want to do with staff or the planning commission. I just wanted to see if I can get some.
I've been pressured by the mayor pro tem to do something like that, so we'll probably try to get those done before the break, because everybody likes the break, so probably try to jam them in somewhere before that, if that's fair enough.
Yeah, that's cool.
All right.
So it seems like a long break, July 20th to August 17th. What's that turn into, two months?
July 20th, August 17th.
July 20th is our last meeting, and then you're going to go dark in August 17th, so it's going to resume again in September?
It's what we always do, isn't it?
Yeah.
Not always.
We've been doing it for the last, like, 10 years, dude.
Yeah?
Yeah.
So you really want to do this?
Yeah, because if there's anything that's important, we just call a special meeting.
I won't put a shit in my pocket for going along with you on this one.
All right. Anyone else have any comments?
So moved.
All right, it's been moved. Is there a second?
What happens with the provision for some type of?
I already said I would help you schedule it. You and I are going to work on this.
Please vote.
Councilmember Gardner, may I ask?
My, mine chose, voted.
Mine only shows two people. Mine shows everybody.
Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Thanks. The future items to be discussed with the city manager's office, public comments, did they hang out?
Yes, we do. His name is Lloyd Queen.
Lloyd.
Queen.
Okay, Lloyd Queen, you are, you can unmute yourself, and this is your public comments, you have three minutes.
Hi, there he is.
There you are, Lloyd. Just unmute yourself, Lloyd. Lloyd, you're still muted.
Button down there.
Lloyd, last chance. I'm sorry, you're having technical difficulties. Trying to hold off, we giving you, we actually sent you a message that you're going to mute. Sorry about that. At this time, we have nothing else on the agenda, and we are adjourned.
I can give one more.
I'm sorry, you didn't sign up, or no one saw, so please come forth. You have three minutes.
We're unadjourned.
We are not adjourned. I had another public comment, I didn't see her hiding over in the corner, the deputy chief was hiding you back there. Uh, yeah, just press that button, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Vanessa Bravo. I am one of the younger people who don't rob old ladies. Hi. So.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to propose an idea. I know that Palm Drive is a very busy street, and so my idea that I wanted to bring up was a community cleanup. I know we used to have one beforehand, but I believe that they're more located towards where the animal shelters are. But I would like to focus more on Palm Drive for the fact that it's our street and that[1750.37] that everybody sees that street. So, you know, with the reduction of all the debris and whatnot, it will reduce pollution, reduce the risk of accidents for there being no trash or debris on the roads, and it'll just be aesthetically appealing. So I just thought this would bring about our sense of community, to maintain cleanliness within, which in turn will bring an increase in community involvement and preserving our desert environment. So I just wanted to know if I can get support on that and how I would go about that with.
Ma'am, you leave your name with the city clerk and myself, and I see Mr. Betts already put his hand up, are going to get ahold of you, because we have a whole committee you're going to join.
Very cool. Thank you.
You're so welcome. Thanks for hanging out with us tonight, and thanks for not robbing old ladies. So don't forget to leave your name and number and email address with the city clerk.
And thanks for volunteering.
Do we want to try Lloyd one more time before I close the meeting?
Yeah, he's still on. I asked him to unmute.
Lloyd, if you can unmute, this is your last chance. I see nothing. With that, we are adjourned.